Thank you, we've got you.
Yvette Richardson, trying to get my camera.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Reynolds? Okay, well, we're missing Dr. Reynolds, but when he comes onboard, we'll give him a warm welcome. And we will start with our agenda items. Number one, update from Dr. Mackey.
Okay, so the only formal presentations, Mr. Craig's going to go through the budget, or finance update, but I do want to give y'all some off the cuff stuff. So if I could just talk a little bit about SER 3 and what's coming in that package. So y'all know that just yesterday, the House concurred, the US House of Representatives concurred with the Senate package on SER 3. And so we are just now, obviously, going through that. I had one call yesterday afternoon with the other state chiefs, and we talked about what we do know. So I'm going to share that with you and let you know more is coming. But, so here's the key message. If you take, it's the distribution formula is the same as SER 1 and 2 on the Title I formula. So if a school district takes the amount of money they got in SER 1, and the amount of money in SER 2, and they add it together, those two add together, pretty close equals what they're getting in SER 3. So it's pretty much double what we have received thus far. It is on the Title I formula. So, and we, and I even have looked at some unofficial numbers. So like in some of our wealthy, the wealthiest school district I looked at that qualifies, as y'all know, we have three school districts that don't participate in Title I. They don't accept Title I funds, so they don't get, they're not in the distribution. But then if we take the others, it's as low as like $870 per pupil in some districts, and it's as high as $9,500 per pupil in some districts, and everything in between. Now, we'll go through this, obviously, with superintendents in great detail, and we'll certainly share more with you. We'll know more in the days ahead. The money is, in the bill, it has to be obligated by September of 2023, which means because of something called the Tidings Amendment, that it actually has to be spent by September of 2024. So those are confusing numbers because it's... So it has to be spent by September of '24.
By '24? Oh, I heard '23, okay.
Well, so the bill says '23, but it's under the Tidings Amendment, which is a provision that says they have an extra year to spend the money, essentially. Have to obligate it by one year, and you'd spend it in the next year. And it gets very confusing because I'm going to, so I'm going to run through. So the SER 1 funds, the first bucket we got last June, April, May, June, has to be spent, spent, I'm going to go with the spent day, by September of '22. The SER 2 money that Congress approved, the President signed in December '27, has to be spent by September of '23. And the SER 3 money has to be spent by September '24. So you see the pattern there. So we have money that can extend out through '24, but the accounting people, Mr. Craig gets up here, and he can fill y'all's heads with real numbers, but, you know, the accountants will have to show that we're spending them in that order. Okay, second thing I want to say, so that's just a little bit about the money. We don't have district-by-district breakdowns, so I know everybody wants to know, but we don't have that yet. And we don't even have an official allocation from the US Department of Education yet, but it'll probably come, it usually takes a couple of weeks. But, you know, we can read the bill, and we have folks helping us in Washington, so that's kind of where we are. So second thing I want you to know is...
Can I ask you a question, please?
Yes, sir.
Will you please inform us by email or letter of preschool systems in Alabama who do not accept any Title I money, please?
Oh, yeah, sure. I mean, I don't mind saying I'm out, if you'd like for me to. I don't, it's not a secret.
Whatever you want to do, sir.
Mountain Brook, Vestavia, and Trustville. So they don't participate in Title I, so they don't get any of the funds. Now, they did get federal funds, because they do get money out of the GEAR Fund. We also work with them to give them an equitable share out of the reserve fund, so it's not like they don't get any of federal funds. But in the distribution, it shows them it's getting no SER funds. Is that good enough, sir?
That's exactly what I wanted, thank you.
Yes, sir. So the second thing I want to say is the allowable. So in the SER 3, there are many more allowable expenses than there were in SER 1 and SER 2, including things like you can spend the money on career tech equipment. Anything that's allowable under the Carl Perkins Fund is allowable under this. So you can imagine, you know, people who are saying, "We want to invest in the future, and, you know, buy 3D printers and those kind of things," I'm not suggesting that right now. We'll probably get emails. But it is, those things were not allowed under SER 1 and 2. Under SER 3, they are. Anything that you can purchase, any expense that would be allowed under IDEA or Special Education is allowed under SER 3. So they can invest money in Special Education, adaptive equipment, you know, the sensory rooms, those kind of things. So there are going to be things they can spend SER 3 money on that SER 1 and 2 could not be spent on. And I want you to know that because as we talk to superintendents and work through those budgets, they're going to look different than their SER 1 and 2, which are focused primarily on, you know, recovery from coronavirus. Now, I threw my throat one time good. This allergy is killing me this time of year, I'm telling you something. So our plan, so the third thing I want to tell you is our plan for a plan. As you know, our districts are just now working on their recovery plans for SER 1 and 2 funds. And because SER 3 is so different, we don't want to mix things up. So what we're planning to do right now is to get all the SER 1 and 2 applications in and processed. And then early summer, probably June, we will start on the SER 3, working on the SER 3 bucket. Now, I've had conversations, certainly Mr. Craig and I have talked, Angela Martin, who does our, handles all the federal money, we've talked. And I've also been in conversations briefly with the Finance Director over SER 3. We've talked a lot over the last year, that Kelly Butler, that works directly for the Governor, about, because the monies, his monies and our monies, they all kind of go together. And so we're in agreement that what we want to do is work through the first two buckets of federal money first, and then the third bucket of federal money. And there is, even though there's a deadline when it has to be spent by, there's not a deadline by when you have to start. And there was, on the last round of money, there was a requirement that the US Department of Education had to get us access to the money within 30 days. And then we had time, we had to turn around and give access to the districts, and we've done all that. But on this round of money, there is no such provision. We could technically wait till, you know, the start of '23 to start allocating money. We obviously won't do that. But I just want to get all this out so people don't think, well, you know, when are we going to start spending the money? When are we going to start spending the money? We've got to get the first two buckets of money clear first. And then there will be, it's $2 billion in SER 3, so it's a lot of money. And in addition to that, there's, the state government gets almost $2 billion. Local governments, counties, and cities get almost $2 billion, I think it is, to distribute among themselves. And then there's a higher amount that's in the billions, and I don't even know how much it is. So it's a lot of money, and the same number of accountants handling it all here and at the, you know, at AIC and the universities and the junior college system, and Mr. Craig and his team, we have the same number of people handling all this, but we've essentially doubled the amount of money they're handling in the last 12 months. And so we just want to be cautious and take our time and make sure we do it right, and that the money is distributed correctly and those kind of things. So I wanted to mention that, and I'd be glad to take any questions. I might not can answer them because we really don't know much more than that, but...
I have a question. When we do an expenditure, like you were saying, that CTE or special ed and all that, is there going to be a method of accountability? Are they going to be a scantron, that they have to have an inventory, and...
Yes, ma'am. So it's federal money. And so it will both have to meet all of our requirements for auditing, but also all the federal auditing. And we expect that in the next, I mean, you're thinking, they usually do audits like three years out, and the money can be spent for four more years. So we're really talking about audits that'll take place seven years from now. But we expect extensive federal auditing. So yes, so you know, when you buy something with federal money, you have to put markers on it, like real tags that show what money it came out of, and what building it's in, and all of that. All of that will be in place. And they'll also have to go through a planning process like we've required for SER 1 and 2. It's not like they can just go out and say, "We're going to, you know, buy all new equipment here or there." There are some reserves, and I want to undersell that too. So there are some reserves, like minimal amounts that have to be spent on Special Education. There are minimal amounts that have to be spent on foster care, children in foster care, homeless, and English language learners. And they're small minimums, but they can spend more than that. But they do have to set aside reserves for those groups. And again, some districts will get a lot more money than others, so that'll dictate. They cannot build buildings with federal money. So for instance, if they went in and said, "I want, we want to do a sensory room for our children with autism," and I'm not seeing that because we don't have the final rules, that they may end up writing a rule and saying it's not allowed. But based on what I've seen so far, it probably would be allowed. But they couldn't go out and say, "We're going to build a room," or "We're going to buy a building for that." They could outfit the room, buy the equipment, and those kind of things. So it's, those things will have to be worked through. Sure.
I do have a question about the process. So as our superintendents are filling out their roadmap to recovery, they're working through that process, I understand we're going to be having office hours to assist them, especially those that would be getting money, and they're a very small district and have small staff and might need a little more coaching and assistance. We have elected superintendents in our state, and so I'm a tiny bit concerned, and I realize that we're going to have to, we're going to have to work through this. But if districts aren't spending money until 2024, but they're planning now with leadership in place, and that leadership may totally change in a year or two years, are we prepared in some way to sort of make some of that planning final in some regard so that we don't have a change in leadership at a local board or superintendent level that might come in and totally change what the district have been planning with the money after it's been vetted through the department, through our process?
An excellent question. It's a little bit tricky.
I understand.
The, so we're going a step further than is required by the federal government, and the step further than most states are in making them do a plan and application for the funds. Because the Congress has like, they are essentially, they're giving that money to, you know, Mobile County Schools or the Gonesville City Schools, and we're the pass through. We can, so there are, so anyway, we're going to make them do a plan, there's no question about that. But as far as like amending their plan, if leadership changed in two years, and they said, "Oh, this is, we don't really want to do those sensory rooms, we want to do this," there's some limitation about what we can, we could do. What we can do is make them come back to us and say, "We want to amend our plan." So they don't just do it in a vacuum, and then that will lead us to conversations about, you know, thinking about things. We're hoping they'll do a good job rating their funds. So if you're thinking about, use the example I've already used, like in Career Tech, if they're thinking about building maybe a new Career Tech Center with their bond money they just got from the state, and using this money to be able to help furnish it with some new equipment, and then assuming they use other funds and all too, that they think about a consolidated plan, which would make it more difficult then to pull one leg out from under that stool, is what we're hoping.
And I'm certainly for local control, I mean hugely supportive of that. What I don't want is waste.
Right.
So, you know, with this much money, that opportunity for waste is great.
Absolutely. We're worried about that too, and we're worried that it is so much money so fast. And to be quite honest, there are so many vendors out there that want the money, that that's why we think it's better to slow things down and make sure they have a plan in place before they access the dollars. So your concerns are well covered.
Ms. Bell, do you have a question?
Well, it's just a follow-up to sort of a statement that was just made that was also a question. It was, the fact that you have an elected local superintendent really does not change things. An appointed superintendent can also do this for... You have, at the local level, change over with local board members, with local superintendents. Not just, in fact, in some cases, there's first ability with the elected because they have to be there for a certain term. But that is the level of, at this point, and I hope it remains at this point. The issue, and I think that I'm actually addressing it, it is important to, whatever your situation that is, to put in, as Mrs. Ziegler has pointed out, a system of perhaps auditing, checks, and balances as a whole regardless, because we all know, we're only here for a short time, and only God knows how it's going to be. But as far as local superintendents are concerned, the junior, or an appointed superintendent is actually, if you compare it, less, the shorter, the shorter, on average, period of time among those, that group, in so many cases, and I could start pointing at local systems where that has been the case. And sometimes it doesn't get better, because of bigger local systems, at least they think it is. Like with local, smaller, it depends as well, and I know Conch and Ikey are sending a system. I've been told my audio is getting in and out, and I don't have a clue. I don't know if there's feedback. At your level, mine has not changed as far as I know here. But at the same time, I do want to say that anything that we do needs to be addressed the same. It doesn't matter whether a local superintendent is appointed or elected. And I think that, again, there's more stability, so many situations with an elected superintendent has to be there for four years, compared to somebody who shows up, that they're there for one or two years, and they move on to another situation. But I do think that I agree with what has been said, there needs to be assistance, checks, and accountability, it needs to be balanced in terms of who has the authority ultimately. The local board members need to be involved in any plan that is produced. It doesn't need just to be the local superintendent, anyway. And that should be, of course, at the state level, the board, our state board needs more involvement in so many things that are presented to us. But thank you, that's all I had to say. But if you can check, it's probably not just my feedback, or the feedback from my situation. It could be the others who are also moving with it.
Okay, you became much clearer, so maybe whatever it was, was a, you know, pollen out there.
Yeah, and let me be clear, that was just an example. That was not directed at elected officials at all. It was just simply an example, and I think you're absolutely right. I think I read recently that the average superintendency is around three years. So it could be any, it could be change all over the place. And I guess I'm just concerned about the accountability piece, also with those changes and what could be sort of made solid and then give that as much flexibility as possible to all that new leadership that we know would be emerging. So didn't mean to suggest anything negative about elected superintendents. Are there any other...
I just want to say, and we're going to spend a great deal of time this summer, because there's office hours now as they go through their SER 1 and 2 plan. In the summer, we will spend a lot of time on SER 3. And at the, you know, superintendents and school boards meeting, we've been asked to present those already, even not knowing what all the information is that will be presented. But we'll continue to build that out. It's good for us.
Are there any other board members that have questions for Dr. Mackey regarding his updates?
Let's wait for Mr. Craig.
No? Okay. Mr. Craig?
All right.
Mr. Craig, does our video friend have this?
Well, we sent it by mail, but we probably sent it too late for them to receive. We sent it in electronic format, too. And I have nobody to blame for that but myself and the lateness of that. So what I wanted to do was just kind of go over format and orient you to the format today. And we can drill down with any questions as it calls for that. As you recall, in the past, we've talked about getting into a routine of kind of quarterly financial statements for the department. This is, I think, our second version of that, and it's not a quarter presentation. I went ahead and did the first five months of this fiscal year, primarily because to incorporate some of the funds that we've become available, so you could see that kind of the most up-to-date. So I took the liberty of doing that. If you do want a technical first quarter that only stops at December, I can certainly do that. But I wanted to kind of go ahead and give you the most recent look. We kind of started with a table of contents, just going to kind of orient us to the report. It's four separate exhibits. It's all the same financial information, the budget numbers, total are going to be the same, the expenditure is going to be the same, it's just reported in a different format. So number, Exhibit 1 is probably the most summarized version. It's simply a listing by source of funds. So all the money that flows through the department, where does it come from? That's kind of the question that Exhibit 1 answers. You can kind of flip through there to the first exhibit, and the exhibit is on the bottom right-hand corner. So it's four pages. Just real quickly, kind of the format of this report. The numbering system to the left, the first four numbers are what we use as a fund source, the last two are the fiscal year. So you go, the numbers that start with a zero all the way down through Page 2, where you see a number down close to the bottom page that starts with a 3, 32, 10, 21. Everything above that is basically state funds. So those are funds that you'll, we'll talk about, that go through the Education Trust Fund budget. A lot of times, the name, the name on the internal, which is what you're looking at, will coincide hopefully pretty directly with the line item in the ETF budget. I want to point out one exception to that. If you go on Page 2, down to about, middle of the page, where the number is 0121, that is the lone federal fund that is buried amongst all the state funds I just, so that's the one exception. That's our DDS, you've heard us talk about that before. It's pretty much 100% funded through the Social Security Administration, but that's where that resides. So that's, first big section of that fund is state funds, basically. The federal funds start with the 3,000 series numbers, kind of through the 5,000 series numbers. So the part of Page 2 and Page 3, those are pretty much all federal funds. And, yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, is this what we received about the Education Trust Fund budget summary? It was 12 pages.
It's, no, ma'am, I sent it electronically, and I sent it, I sent it by mail, but I sent it by mail just yesterday, so you probably haven't received it yet. And that is, again, that is nobody's fault but my own, I waited too late.
Electronically on, what night was it?
Yeah.
So they can look. Is it Tuesday night, Tuesday?
And I'm looking at something electronically, but it has 12 pages. It says, "Education Trust Fund Budget Summary," is that not what you're referencing?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
It's the budget analysis report.
Analysis, okay, let me, let me...
It was sent on March the 9th, I think.
Okay, let me go on the report. Thank you, analysis report. Sorry about that, thank you.
So if we're still on Page 3 or 4 of Exhibit 1, just call your attention to some of the stuff that Dr. Mackey was just talking about. Out in the middle of the page was with Fund Number 4290, 41. You can kind of start to see our CARES monies there. So there's the SER 1 Fund, the 4290 CARES Act, those are the original CARES Act funds, the GURF funds. CARES Act is just below that. You recall back when some of the money, what we refer to as the Coronavirus Relief Funds, that we did in kind of separate pots to the LEAs. One was related to health and wellness, and the Governor made that money available to us in our LEAs. Those are those funds, that was originally 170 million. And then you start to see where we've just incorporated the SER 2 funds below that. You can see that those are the total allocations there, the 899 million, the 45502. So when we, next, presumably, next time we do this, you'll have the SER 3 monies on there. And a lot of the federal funds, and Dr. Mackey touched upon this earlier, are multi-year funds. So for example, when you look at the original SER funds there, and you see the $186 million budget, that's what carried over from the original year, if that makes sense. So coincidentally, because we just have, we just have received award notifications for the SER 2 money, what you're seeing in that 899 million is the total original allocation. So you'll, as we move forward and we report in fiscal years, you'll see pieces of the, or the remaining pieces of the original funds. So if we get down to the 5,000 series accounts, still, we're still in federal funds, but that's predominantly our food service funds, federal food service funds. You'll recognize a lot of those titles. That's where the National School Lunch reimbursement comes through, summer feeding, child and adult care, et cetera. And then they tend to have a lot of, kind of purpose-specific iterations of those federal program funds. Just to point out another exceptions, on Page 4 of Exhibit 1, within those 5,000 series, you'll see about a number, it starts with 5270, about a third of the way down through the page. That's our statewide purchasing program, so it's technically not a federal fund. However, that's essentially where we do statewide purchasing for food. We do that pretty much by region, but that technically is a state fund, and we issue rebates for various volumes of activity to LEAs. So with a few exceptions, when the numbers start to be 6,000, those are other type funds, state-type funds, and/or federal, or contributions, where we have funds that may have been contributed for a certain purpose. Example being the AT&amp;T Foundation Special Incentive Grant. That was, that was an arrangement where they awarded monies for those specific purposes. So we go to Exhibit 2. Exhibit 2 is basically a little bit more detailed version of the first exhibit, which was listing only by source of funds. Exhibit 2 is by source of funds, and within those sources of funds, how has the money been spent in kind of overarching categories like salaries, benefits, travel, in-state, out-state, et cetera, you can see those. So that's kind of the hierarchy of the reporting. I won't go through that, but you can, you can kind of see that it's just a little bit more of extended level of detail there, because you can see the personnel costs that are involved. A lot of the ones that are predominantly pass-through type funds, you'll see a big number in that grants and benefits number. So if you go to some of the... So if you go to some of the federal funds, you'll, you'll typically see a lot more pass-through, sub-grant type, type expenditures. Exhibit three, if you go through the, the twenty-page exhibit two. Exhibit three, we kind of go back to a more summary report, which is by cost center. So you kind of think about this report, kind of like you would our organizational chart. You'll see, it's taking all the money and saying, all right, which, which section does the money flow through? So you'll, you'll see a lot of names on here that coincide with our organizational chart. You'll see some exceptions, those are, that we do for various reasons. Maybe, maybe we'll pull some costs in the center before we allocate it out. But, but those are generally arranged as what, what sections are here at the department does the money flow through? And that would be on page, well, it's just a two, exhibit three is just a two-page exhibit, so. And then after that.
May I point out something?
Sure.
When you look at your exhibit where you have, it said exhibit three, where you have listed the State Board of Education, if there's anyone who thinks that we are a large expense, you just look at item number two, and you compare it to everything else in every other line item. We are the biggest bargain in state government as far as the State Board of Education and the expense that you have listed here. I just, it's, when you try to tell people how much we cost, including the fact that we don't have any kind of support, like an office, et cetera, and I'm not complaining, I've done this for some time without all of that. But I just want to make sure that people understand that for all of the time that we, we want to, not because we're here for service, and we're, we do serve, but that it's a, when you start comparing our line item to the rest of the other line items, and understandably, now, let me just point that out, I understand completely when you're talking about, for example, transportation. But I just want to make sure that people understand that you're talking about in total. Look at that budget item if people question.
It's a, it's a lean organization.
So we do, I think we do an unbelievable amount of work, and we do it well considering so many circumstances. But again, I'm not complaining, I'm, I'm honored to serve, and I know the others are as well.
So if we kind of start, look to exhibit, if we look to exhibit four, which is the final exhibit, it's, it's, again, kind of relates to the cost center where that's, that's the, the starting formation. So it's, this one is by cost center or by, by section. And within those sections, it's the sources of funds that, that are budgeted through that section. And below source of funds is the object category. So we kind of taken the, the three tiers that we've been working with, and we're, we're taking it down to that level. So by section, by source of funds, and then by, by object category. If you want to go to a example, let's go to maybe page, uh, let's go to page four of thirty-four in exhibit four, just to kind of walk through as an example. You got Instructional Services, which is section oh-seven, you recognize that from our old chart. Basically, S D E O N M, that's, if you're familiar with our, our ETF budget, that's the basically the allocation, the, the base allocation to run the operations department. So, so the first, first fund source level is, is that money, which basically funds the general operations of instructional services. If you go down there through advanced placement, you'll recognize that fund source from the ETF. Also, that's the advanced placement line item, you can see how that's spent. It's primarily spent in the services and grant line items. Another line item you'll recognize from the ETF, the readings fundamental, you see an arts, again. So it's mostly, you can kind of look at that and say, are mostly state funds flow through instructional services? Anyway, just wanted to kind of go through an example to, to kind of lay the format out. And with that, I'll, I'll leave it to you for review and questions. If you want to ask questions now, that's fine, too. If you want to review it in more detail and ask questions, we'll, we'll do whatever the board pleases.
This is Stephanie Bell, I do have a request rather than a question. I know I'm not the only board member who has people who ask about, well, did you know? You always preface it with, did you know? But it happens even more so during the legislative session when I speak to my legislators and legislators in general, but also the general public, because they, there's so much discussion about, even though our discussions are ongoing, people tend to fix, fix their attention on education even more so during legislative sessions for whatever reason. But the question that I'm asked constantly, and actually throughout the year, I'll have one, a question here and there. I would like to have, and please share it with the other board members, a list of all contracts starting at a hundred thousand dollars. I would like to go lower, but I understand the value of the dollar these days, it doesn't go as far. But with, I would like to have a list of the contracts for a hundred thousand dollars or more, plus the names of the individual, the company, and the, in a very short, concise way, the purpose of the contract. I know that some of this can be done because of computers and the, some of the software that we have. I realize during this time it is perhaps an added item, but I think that it would have value. For example, if you have an org, a company or a vendor or an organization that receives, has been receiving money ongoing for five, even more years, but just five, and that's usually a pattern. But if you can start with the first year, just one year, and then perhaps update it for us, but I'd like a total of five years for these contracts, the amount of money spent, or whatever the contract, we all hopefully receive, and I'd requested them many years ago, copies of the Contract Review Committee Agenda Item. And so thankfully, those are still sent to us, but we get one page. And so in the future, if there is something that sticks out, and there probably will be in some cases, questions, then perhaps we can ask for more information. But I've done this before, and it is helpful, because I had a call just the other day, did you know? And then they named the company, or do you know? It's always like that, and no, I can't answer the question. Well, the, the follow-up is, well, why don't they tell you that? Why don't you know? And I said, well, it doesn't necessarily go through the board. In fact, that, these days, it happens even less than it used to. We used to approve, for example, some of the assessment contracts, but, as fire is one example of that. But it was not that often, as you know. But I would like to have a list of the contracts, the amount, the, a synopsis of the purpose, and the individuals who signed the contract, the contact individuals, who probably is also listed on the Contract Review Committee Agenda Item. And I would, you know, I'd like to have it when you're able to do it. I've had questions from legislators, they probably, I told them they could probably get the information faster than I can. And I hope that's wrong, but anyway, I, I would very much appreciate that information. I know in the past I've requested it from post-secondary and when we had post-secondary under the authority of the board, but also K-12 has provided it before your tenure. So I would, that's my request for today as a follow-up, and it's not a question, but it's a request.
Yeah, I've got some ideas about how we can get the board access to that type of information. And be, we'll be happy to do that, kind of in, kind of under the terms you described, Ms. Bell. We'll, we'll get to work on that.
Thank you very much, I do appreciate it, because we have, we could dig ourselves, and I've done that, but since we don't really have any staff, and most we have it on our, you know, on personal dime, it's a lot more difficult to do these things on our own. But you know how to access that, and I very much appreciate that, thank you. And I like the extra time and added burden, but I do very much appreciate it, I think. And along the way, if we can keep that going, and we did it one time a number of years ago, it would be helpful to everyone, so that we don't have to call in, we don't have to make requests like this. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McCarty, you have any questions?
And it's also a request as well, and it's building on, on that topic that Ms. Bell brought up. Yes, I, I've also, Ms. Bell, had questions as well. And, and I do appreciate, Nora, when you send us that, that's very helpful and very instructive. But I almost feel like it's, it's too late to have input into the conversation. And so if there is a way, at the inception, when it's still within the department, you know, when it's still being discussed, like we had a discussion about night house PD versus letters PD. And then if a contract is being, I don't understand, I suppose, and this is me not knowing contract law, I don't understand when we are legally bound to do an RFP, you know, when we have to do a bid and, and write the requirements and, and request for bids, and then get, you know, we would choose, I assume, the lowest bid that meets the qualifications, and when there's a sole source. So I, I need to understand that as a board member, I think. And then also, I don't understand the process of, I know sometimes we award grants, and I'm not sure that I always understand the grant application process for the LEAs and for other vendors and that sort of thing. And so to better understand, I suppose, from the beginning, that when we're discussing, for example, I assume now that we pass the ELA standards, we'll start looking at textbooks and we'll start looking at PD and that sort of thing. Well, who, how do we determine who should be awarded that contract if it's not done in-house? Who, how do we determine that? And when does that discussion first start? And when is a contract, like within the department, when are y'all discussing that? And, and because to me, in a way, when it gets to contract review, the decision has pretty much already been made. You know, so I suppose, I feel like I would be more of service if I'm in on the discussion early on, when it's still in-house. And I want to stay in my lane, I mean, I do. I don't want to micromanage, I don't think that's our job, but I also want to understand the process, and right now I don't. And so how to understand when an RFP is required, when it's not, when it's sole source, when it's not. Is there a fair timeline to get this information? And what is that? And so just as, as much information as we can get as early as possible, that would be helpful for me. And I may be the only board member that feels this way, but, but for me, that would be very helpful. Thank you, Ms. Bell.
You're not the only board member that feels that way, definitely not, Dr. McCarty. So thank you for sharing that, and I agree with you.
Are there any other board members that have a question for Mr. Craig before he runs?
I guess I have, I have a question. Will you send the information that was just requested concerning contracts and how they are processed? Can you send that information to us?
We sure will. What I was just kind of thinking, maybe if we, we marry Ms. Bell's request with Dr. McCarty's request and propose a mechanism to provide that information to you, kind of on an ongoing basis that would kind of tag all those bases that were described. It probably, I'm, I'm thinking maybe a, a log of, of contract information kind of timely provided so that, you know, you, you'd be seeing it during its development as opposed to, something like that. And I'll put, Dr. Mackey and I'll get together and I'll propose something, and we'll, we'll figure out a way to do that.
Thank you very much.
I'm also talking about having information concerning how contracts are selected, how the people that will receive the contract are selected. Will that information be also included?
Sure, we'll, we'll provide you with the process that, that takes place. It's different for every contract, you know, ones that go through an RFP and ones that don't, ones that are formula-driven grants versus ones that aren't. Aren't, you know, federal grants oftentimes are structured differently. But yes, we'll, we'll provide you sufficient reading material on, on those types of things.
And may I say, for our new board members, and I apologize, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify something. To say, when Ms. Bell asked for a request, it is understood that we all will receive that information. So just so y'all know, when you start receiving things, it might not have been your request, but it had been requested by another board member. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Bell, this is Brian Reynolds.
I didn't hear that.
But Dr. Reynolds had a question. Dr. Reynolds, did you have a question?
I have a comment. I would like to begin with Mr. Craig. We had some recent issues in my school district, and Mr. Craig met with me personally and explained some issues which were in the public domain, and was very thorough and made me feel very comfortable in his history as a superintendent and his history in the department and my role as a state school board member. And I appreciate and want to publicly thank him for taking the time and being so, such, has been such great expertise in the area of his service.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, board members.
She said I could run. All right, get on and forth, I got you.
Travel, travel was down, right? Because we couldn't travel, because COVID, we had to do all these meetings. So, and I'm looking through all this, trying to find PD. And we know we're doing mega conference this year, which thank you to everybody in the department that's putting that on. I'm real excited about it, but there's oftentimes a high registration fee. So I was sort of wondering, could we waive the registration fee since we've saved so much on travel?
Yeah, and we're going to have to get down to the program level and the folks that put that together.
Well, and I was looking, I don't know where PD is in here, I couldn't find it. Is it a?
Uh, PD kind of comes through, uh, multiple categories.
Not in just one category, but anything we could do to encourage participation at mega conference. And I know sometimes the cost can be prohibitive, because the cost of the registration, then the cost of the hotel, the cost of the travel, and we want our teachers to have awesome PD, especially given all the courses of study that we've recently passed. And I don't want to make it a financial burden for them, or I want to reduce as much as possible that.
It's, it's historically been a kind of a shared cost model. A lot of the federal funds from this department have gone towards the, the mega cost structure. The, the fees that districts pay for their participants typically come, come from the LEA. So perhaps there's a way to, but it's, it's, it's kind of a shared cost arrangement by its, by its nature already. I've talked specifically about mega, and that's about as far as I can go with that. Somebody's behind me is going to have to help me.
Check mega, I just want to, I want to make it as accessible for as many as possible. And I would hate for cost to be a factor that will limit the numbers.
And Dr. Boyd, are you with the mega conference?
Yes, yes, sir.
So is the word getting out that it is coming to fruition so that the superintendents and all know, so that they can start planning and money and?
Right, and we'll have two options, in-person option and a virtual option if someone chooses to do that.
And during our meet, greet with our DAC, there was some asking of, what was the, I can't remember, what did we ask? One of the experiences?
Simulation.
Oh, simulation.
We used to have a simulation at mega, so put that in the back of your brain, we would like to have that.
The simulation, what type of simulation?
It's a dyslexic.
Oh, yes, 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 absolutely.
I think Denise Gibbs and Sonya.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we'll do our best to get that handled. Yeah, we'll do our best to get that handled.
Please. And they thought if you just talk to them, they will help in any way.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think the room block's already full, isn't it, Dr. Boyd?
The room's full.
Yeah, three major hotels are full.
Oh, so they have been...
Oh, yeah.
I got mine left out.
Yeah, there are thousands of people already.
So you can still know even if you have a long drive in every day. But it was the only hotel I could get, which is, you know, a testament to the quality that you offer. So I applaud that. Again, I just, I just really want as many people as possible to attend, and I hate for finances at the local level to be an impediment to that, so. Was that your question?
Better catch, Mr. Craig, because he thinks he's been summoned to other work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we're moving on to agenda item number two, board member questions. I wanted to bring, I'm going to cheat and go first. Mine is not really a question, but I was, and I'll be honest, I couldn't remember if I was listening to talk radio or if it was on, but some kind of news, you know, cycle or whatever. But they were discussing the ages of 13 through 19, that was all they were, about which they were speaking. And they were talking about these numbers that actually brought me to my knees about the increase of suicide and drug overdose. I think the suicide, and don't quote me, Trisha, don't quote me for my numbers, but it was like high minus, I'm going to say 96 suicide increase and like 98% increase in drug overdose. So we speak a lot about, you know, our kids are going to be coming from behind and we're going to academically bring them in, but my thought is that their learning will be impacted. So we need to be cognizant with the summer camps or summer coming on or our children returning, be it when the governor opens, you know, the opportunity or come the fall, that we need to have in-place plans because these babies hear every day about dying from COVID and about masking and staying away from each other. So I have to say, I am totally, completely concerned about our welfare. And this, and I know that the statistics about which I spoke was the high schoolers. Now, we can bring that all the way down, and you know they're impacted from preschool or on up. So I just, I guess it's not a question, it's just throwing it out there about how and why, or let's just really work on how we can get ahead of the game. So that was my soapbox of the day.
No question. That's a big, big challenge for everybody. We, and there's been a lot of discussion about it on national forums and especially children that have not been able to attend in-person, people who've been able to attend in-person, even if they go only a couple of days a week, there appears to be stronger mental health. But we do have, so in their ESER 1 and 2 plan, mental health supports, the social emotional learning is a part of what they can spend money on. And we've had a lot of questions from districts, and Dr. Boyd, or Dr. Davis might know more, Sean Stevenson's back there, but we've had a lot of questions about how they can spend money for those kind of programs. And we've had some about programs from teachers, mental health for teachers and staff, too.
And I should have mentioned the adults also, because Dr. Chestnut and I had a discussion about that, and she reminded me that the adults needed as well. And I know Ms. West was very kind and shared a podcast, but with that, which was excellent, wasn't it? We have to be careful about to whom our schools turn for podcasts and opportunities because, as you said, vendors are out there, and we want to be sure they are vetted and doing what they are supposed to do and be cautionary in that regard.
And ESER 3 funds can also be spent on that same, in that same framework. And in fact, in ESER 3, there's actually more of a push toward that because they've made it clear that even though 1 and 2 monies are being spent that way, but in 3, they very much call out children, I think I mentioned before that they're in foster care, that you have to address homeless, children with special needs, you have to, in your plan, you have to address those things. Now, we, we've already asked ours to address those things, but in the federal law, they didn't have to before, and now they've, they're including the same things we have included. So that's, point well taken. I know you don't, that it's more of a comment than a question, but know that we're really concerned about those things, too. Absolutely.
Okay. Ms. West, question?
Yes. Dr. Mackey, would you elaborate on something you mentioned in our meeting earlier today, which is the April, I think, meeting, we're expected to have a discussion about textbooks? Just very much in support of the bill that was written, and I don't really know where that is today. I've had some back and forth with folks in the legislature about it. But should that not be successful? Should the board not receive any change through the legislative process? Are we going to be discussing next month how we're going to proceed with English Language Arts textbook adoption? And can you talk about that just a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. I can, and it'll get a little bit confusing, but I'm going to talk about it in light of what we're planning now and in light of the bill. So the bill itself is in the, it's ready for floor action in the Senate. I had a conversation this weekend with Senator Nelson. He is, he is the chair of that committee. The bill came out of his committee on a seven to one vote. There's, you know, seemed to be strong favorability for it. The biggest confusion is the part about other instructional materials. And I cannot, you know, certainly not going to speak for a senator, but we have talked about take, just the, taking that part out. He and I have had that discussion. So that doesn't mean the Senate's had that discussion, okay? I've got to be very careful. It's hard to have these discussions because you can't speak for a body like the legislature when you talk to one of them. But just taking that part out so it doesn't confuse the matter of textbooks. So the textbook process, very clearly, you know, there's still a textbook committee, goes to the board. So if that part were separated, I think that would help alleviate some confusion. He said he'd be amenable to that, but we haven't had a chance to come back this week and talk about it. As you know, he's had some other bills that he wanted to work on this week, and he asked that we just put it off a little bit. In the House, it is, it's not had any committee action yet, but it is, you know, it's before the House Committee and probably, I wouldn't say it'll probably move until maybe after spring break even, because there are a lot of bills over there. But it is still live and going. So let me stop, so what we want to do next month, now we have new courses of study, is amend the process. So the process itself's moving forward. Y'all remember, you approved those textbook committee members back in November. So that's done. But as they are beginning their work, rather than it coming to you in the last month or two, we wanted to bring them in, not the whole committee, but talk about the process and the start at the very beginning. So now we have it, we come back next month and be our proposal, and then have a discussion at least with Carolyn Jones and maybe a couple of people from the textbook committee, the chairs, or, you know, again, we couldn't bring all, I think there's like, all together, there's maybe 80 of them, couldn't bring them all in here, but have a discussion about the process going forward. And I think it'd be good if they heard from board members what, you know, concern, direction questions upfront to inform their deliberations rather than them doing deliberating and it just coming to the board at the end. Now, it still has to come to the board at the end, obviously, for an official work session, a recommendation presentation has to stay on the floor for so many days. There's two open public comment periods. None of that changes, either in the bill or in the proposed process. But this would just be an informal meeting where they come to the work session and start the process with you. So if the bill passes in the meantime, there are some things that would change. The biggest one is that when the board eventually votes on the list, then we could release the list immediately rather than waiting on the contracts to be signed by the governor. So that's something we talked a lot about with math, and we, and if it passes and that provision's still in there, we could do that. But there are other provisions in the new law that won't affect this committee. So for instance, even if it passed next week, the committee for English Language Arts, so one of the things is that the committee members will be selected by the eight board districts rather than the seven congressional districts. Well, that won't affect this committee because they're already been approved and appointed by the board. So that part of the law would not affect, it would affect the next round of textbooks, not, not anything that's ongoing. So it would, you know, it would, some things would take effect on this cycle, but not everything would. But the big one, I think, that we had so much discussion about, and that is letting those rubrics be public before, well, two things. One is the, expanding the rubric, so it's more than just by the standards. And two is making it public immediately upon the board's approval rather than waiting till the contracts were signed. Those would apply to this textbook cycle. But we would not change committee members in mid-cycle. I don't think anybody would expect that.
Mrs. Ziegler? Yes, and I hope that you can hear me, and I hope there is no feedback. But let me emphasize, this is a proposed piece of legislation. This is not, this is a proposed piece of legislation. This is not something that has passed. I want to share that I actually watched that presentation, that public hearing, in the legislative committee. I have read the changes in this legislation, this proposed legislation. It is not exactly what we requested. In fact, it's not really what we requested. A lot of things have been added. Yes, it does address the concerns that we had as a board, and that, of course, you've mentioned, and that deals with the ratings so that the local systems have more information. And before that, that, and in our case, because we vote on it, that the board has more information. It is not going to pass next week at this point. We certainly should be concerned as a board, and every board member should hopefully be able to listen. However, we have not, if I didn't know how to find it, and if I didn't have some forewarning from outside sources, I would not have known necessarily that the committee was meeting, and I am appreciative of that fact. I watched and heard our representatives say some things that are actually, that were actually inaccurate. And something that I have been waiting for, and it has not happened, there was a request from not one, but two, and actually others nodded their heads in agreement, that they wanted to hear from the board. They didn't want, it was not the department, it was not the state superintendent, it was the board, not individual board members, although that is, that is relevant and that should be done as well. And I have done that, I'm sure others have, hopefully, and I know that they have. But they need, they requested hearing from the board in a letter. As far as I know, this is not Mrs. Ziegler's responsibility, this is the responsibility of anyone from our department who's happened to be in that room where the request was made directly to that individual in particular. I watched it, I heard it. And it has not, there's not, has not been any follow-through specifically to the board. The board is everyone. And so from that standpoint, we need to have some response from the board. Mrs. Ziegler may have already been contacted regarding that, I hope so, but there are problems, and I've already mentioned them, where the board is actually removed more so from the process than it has been in the past. And if we're supposed to vote on something, we need to have more input, not just having representatives from our, of course, that was a correction in the way it was written since so many legislators don't realize that we have different boards, districts, I think they do now, more so than they have in the past, but realize it, but that is not a major change. That's just a correction that you would expect. The fact is that it does not include the board. It also adds another committee that, you know, the superintendent, and I'm not naming you, I'm saying any superintendent, current and in the future, would have in terms of, in essence, taking away responsibility from the state textbook committee. Now, whether that's a good idea, that needs to be discussed among board members, and that needs to be addressed, again, at the request of legislators who serve on that committee. Senator Figures was one, and Senator Elliott was another. But that needs to be done, and I was very disappointed in our representative. I'm aware of some other misinformation that was shared earlier that day, inaccuracies that I hope have been corrected, and it seems to be happening. But this one, where there was a request for communication directly from this board, not the department, but this board and board members specifically, and it was reiterated several times by not one, but two different at least, and then others have nodded heads in agreement that they wanted to hear from us. That has, as far as I know, has not been the case. I've been waiting through emails, looking at emails from this particular individual, and I have not seen them. It's possible they went to my spam, but as far as I know, because I checked spam as well, I have not received that information, that request, from the individual who stood before the committee that day. And I heard and I watched that particular presentation. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Ms. Bell, just so you know, I have not heard back either.
From that individual, are you talking about from the individual who represents our department?
Right.
That request? Yeah. And that, that should be done, but it, I wish they posted, and they should post their committee meetings, and I guess they don't have enough space on their website to have many committee meetings. But that particular one should have been shared with us. That information should have been shared, and there should be a follow-through. It's not your fault, it should have been done.
Dr. Reynolds?
Ms. Ziegler, Wayne Reynolds?
Yes, sir?
Senator Nelson, chairman of the committee, is my state senator, and he has expressed to me a concern about the authority and position of the state board, and they're receiving input from us. I think a member of the State Department of Education called me and told me that Nelson wanted her to review proposals for me to make sure that I had agreement, and I went over some of them. But I know our senators, both the chairman, who is Senator Nelson, and the vice chair, Senator Butler, respect the role of the State Department of Education, and I hope, as Ms. Bell and you have stated, we can be communicated with and our input be more formalized than it has been in the past.
Ms. Ziegler? Yeah, go ahead. Dr. McCarty?
Changing the subject for a second. Lean Frog implementation. Can Dr. Mackey, or Dr. Boyd?
Dr. Boyd, you want to?
Sure, just to bring her about to speed. Sometime back, a proposal was done by Lean Frog. They looked at our system. This is the recertification system that's in Dr. Meyer's section of our department. And we looked, when they did the report, they stated that there are some things that we could do to make it more automated and so forth there. Since that time, we have looked at different companies to do the work. We've settled on Alabama Supercomputer, and they're now doing the work. They have a contract to do that particular work. As it stands now, based on our last update, we plan to have the project implemented and rolling on October 1st of this particular year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ziegler, Wayne Reynolds, different subject.
Go ahead, Dr. Reynolds.
We have normally a very effective retreat where we can discuss some of the things we're discussing now face to face. I have been, the only communication I've had was the decision to hold... I have been, the only communication I've had was the, the, the decision to hold a retreat on April 19th. I have conveyed and I think copied the other board members that I'm not available to that day, on that date. I talked to Nick Moore this morning. He told me I'm the only one that's, he's seen formal information that couldn't attend. And I told him I thought there were others that couldn't attend. I thought our wedding, our retreats were generally, oh, developed by Ms. Bell in this case and the vice chair you. But I can't attend in November and I don't know if I'm the only one. If that's fine, y'all just go ahead and do your, your thing. After all, I'm the only male on the board, so what difference does it make? But I have concern that the retreat is not a retreat. The boards can't, the, the board is not planning to really get down to the quote, nitty gritty and have a face-to-face discussion. Because I'll be at the board meeting in April in person, but it's different. And I want to be, I want to be part of the retreat and I want it to be held so that the board members are there. There are eight of us who are elected board members. And if I'm the only one that can't be there, that's fine, but I'm not, uh, delighted with the arbitrary decision of holding it on the 19th without assurance that the board will appropriately be represented. That's all.
Uh, Ms., Dr. Reynolds, uh, Mrs. Ziegler, um, Dr. Reynolds, I also, um, actually responded almost immediately uh, when we received that email. And I, I cannot attend the retreat either. That, I was not asked. Um, actually, I thank the board members who did send in dates where they were available before the governor decided to take it over, which is, I mean, that's prerogative. However, uh, it is supposed to be a board retreat for elected board members, uh, specifically as state board members. Um, the governor certainly can do what she's done. She's the governor and she is elected and she does serve as an ex officio member by virtue of her office. And she does serve as president, as president, but by virtue of her office. However, um, I cannot attend, and I did state that in the email. So Mr. Moore is mistaken because, or he just hasn't seen his response, the response in the email. I did send it to all. I usually don't do that. I usually, if I acknowledge receipt, I just put, "Thank you," and I send it to the person who sent it. But in this case, I did respond to all and, or replied to all. And I hope that, uh, he will go back. But I'm on record now, I cannot attend either. And I'm not changing something that would take, I'd have to wait another month or two perhaps to, um, to get the appointments that I have. So I'm, I'm, I can't change it. And I appreciate, I appreciate the alert and thank you so much for your comments, but I have the same problem.
Ms. Ziegler, I responded back to Jeff Langham. I believe he was the one that sent us the email.
And that's what I did as well.
And said, so it may not have gotten to Nick Moore, I'm not sure, because I believe I just replied just to him. But I also do, tonight, work at JSU, will not be able to attend. Can you ask, Dr. Mackey, can you ask Jeff to, Dr. Langham, sorry? Because I responded to that and I believe, um, Mrs. McCray. And Dr. Chestnut, did you not respond to that email as well?
I did.
So please, so, um, we will make sure that Dr. um, Langham sends that forward or even resubmits it to Nick Moore. Uh, do I have any other board questions? Website update.
There have to be more than that. Okay, the website update, I appreciate you asking that question. So what we, um, would like to do, you know, I meet, I think I told you last month, I'm meeting with them every Tuesday at 10 o'clock, the two ladies, young ladies we've hired inside to help with that. At our meeting this week, we set kind of a demo, uh, won't be a discussion now, but a demo for March 30th, if you're available, March 30th at 10 o'clock, they can go through where we are on the website. And they've built out a lot of it. I mean, there's, they've ported over and created dozens and dozens of documents. It's not all there. As you know, the website, I forget how many thousand pages we determined it was. And everything's not going to move to the new website. We, we have made one change because we were going to do a soft rollout and make it public on April 1st and kind of run two websites until June, until we'd switch over to the new website completely July 1st. We now think that's going to be really confusing to the public if there are two websites and they don't know which one to go to, so, and we're worried about conflicting information. So in other words, child nutrition is one of the places they've built out on the new website. So if we still had child nutrition on the old website and the new, there could be conflicting information. So what we've decided is we're not going to do a soft rollout, but we want to do the soft rollout for the board. So 10 o'clock, March 30th. And we're going to do it as a webex, so you don't have to come in. And we're going to record it. So if you say, "Well, I can't watch it 10 o'clock, but could I watch it that afternoon?" We're going to record the webex so you can see the whole thing. And since it's a demo, um, you know, that, it'll be, it'll be the same. You'll get the same presentation whether you're live or you watch it later. We'll sit, look for the webex, uh, to come out, probably close to the end. If you'll, we'll send you a calendar invite to keep the time. But we may send the invite, the webex closer because if you're like me, sometimes I get lost. But we'll send it as, so it can go in your calendar too, if you use an Outlook calendar. And I would say if you'll set aside an hour and a half, um, they could probably stretch it to two hours, but, but I think an hour and a half is sufficient time to go all the way through it. And you're going to see, the whole design is very different, it's very clean. But that, that's kind of the update and where we are and what the plan is for the full rollout. It's a test site now.
It's on a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday at 10 o'clock. And we picked that because that's just their regular, that's when they meet with me, every Tuesday at 10 o'clock. And so we felt like if we just kept that time, but made that week instead of a working meeting, it would be the, uh, demo for the board.
Uh, Dr. Mackey, or Mrs. Ziegler, um, I have a question for Dr. Mackey.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I would, two things. Um, I would like, speaking of contracts, and I've made this request already, so it may come out in the information. But I would like to have information about how much has been spent on the contract with Engage and who, and who was hired previously to redo the website and how much is spent in order to provide, uh, this change with our website that we have been anticipating for a number, well, several years. Uh, the other question I have, um, and that's a request. This is a question. How do people, and I hope this will be part of that change? I've had multiple, and others I'm sure have had similar requests, people who want to comment. Uh, the latest have been, uh, people who want to comment on the FATSa proposal as a requirement for graduation. That's not the only one. I had requests, I guess, more recently even, ELA. The latest would be the FATSa because that's next on the list. But how can, can we put a place on the front of the website, um, so that we have a place where people can comment, uh, because they, with all of the virtual and the half and half, uh, meeting, it makes it more difficult, uh, for that public hearing and for that opportunity. They're told that they can have a, we have a public, uh, comment period, but they don't have a way to do that. And if, I know in some cases they can dig deep and it's in the website somewhere where they can make a few comments about, for example, the course of study. But that's somewhat limited. We need a place right there, front and center, on the front page of the website where the public can access a way to make public comments. I think that helps all of us, in particular, as far as the development process. It, I think that will be helpful, whether it is something like a FATSa recommendation or a, um, you know, course of study. That's one thing I'd like to know. And then let me correct as far as Engage. I'm, I'd like to know, I think AUM perhaps was the last. But all of, how much has that website cost us in, in terms of the development? So let me go back to that request. But we need a place front and center on our website for the public to provide public comments. Because we've had some of the places where they've been told, "Well, you had an opportunity to comment." Well, they didn't know how to do it. And not everybody even goes to the website, but at least it would give board members the opportunity to say, "Well, please go to the website and this is what you need to do." Or you can do whatever in addition to that.
Yeah, I think you're.
But I, I, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think y'all will like the new website layout. There's so much on the front of our current website and, um, and we get so many comments, you know? Most of them have been COVID-related in the last year, but thousands of comments have come in. We do have a general comment, email address, and it is on there. But I realize there is so much on there, it's hard to find. So that is one of the changes we're making is to make that more clear, that communication, right front top, communication, and those go to, um, Dr. Sibley's office and then they, they're just general comments and questions. And a new, I won't, I want to spoil the, but you're going to see a whole new section called, um, Ask Ed. That's just, it's just super, you know, information, um, about, you know, common questions and how to get things. And so I think you'll like it, um, but I, but point well taken. We, we have had that discussion already internally about making it clear how people can, who just don't know where they need to go, but need to, to contact somebody, how they make those contacts.
Do we have any other board questions before we turn it over to Dr. McCarty? Okay. Okay. Letters, letters. Okay, so questions about letters. Is there still a waiting list that I'm sure you can look to?
I don't know. If we.
There, there is.
I mean, it kind of rolls every mind. Like, everybody who was on the waiting list in January, I think, is now off. Depends on when they can start a cohort. But I don't know, Dr. Davis may want to come up and answer questions.
Well, um, a question, do we still have waiting lists? And then second, can we use some of this ESR money and all this other money to pay for the PD to move them off of the waiting list and into a cohort? So that they can be fully trained?
Yes, we just shifted all of the folks with their licenses that either opened them and did not pursue it. So we shifted all that first so that we did not waste money that was, that was just sitting there with those. The manuals came in, we've gotten them back out to districts. So we figured all that out, got all that squared away so that we would have an actual number. And that's what Dr. Strichik is working on, getting us the actual number of, um, folks that still want to pursue this and pursue letters so that we can then, I can go to Dr. Mackey and say, here's what we have and that's what we're telling districts to get with the training we've done for the recovery plan. Either A, look at, do you want to do this? If you've got 80 people and you want to run them on the days you want them and you, and that's a law of, you know, learning loss. A, do that. B, get your teachers to go on and get on our waiting list because we want to come and say that, could we use some of the state reserve? What, you know, but we don't, I want to know how much. And so that's what Dr. Strichik is, they've been working, she and Denise Perkins, on cleaning that up. So, so that should be within the next month that we should be able to have, that's what we said. When we get through 2023, we should have a sustainability plan where we are, have a budget of, I mean, we're going to have to pay for those teachers' licenses, you know, the new teachers. But all of the training that goes along, that's why we have all of our regional folks and they're, you know, getting that training too, so.
Well, and that was my next question.
Yes, that's what we're working on.
Are all of our reading coaches, specialists, everybody in ARI, are they either fully trained in letters? Or they, or are they in the process of being fully trained?
Yes, because we've hired three or four, um, folks, as folks have retired here at the state, actually reposted to, to start with our regional folks. So those that have either, either they, you know, may want to go back to the classroom or we, based on the numbers too, we still, we're not at capacity. So we've, we have an ongoing Thursday where they look at who's applied and do they need to start rolling interviews so that we are ahead of the game finally? So, yes.
I do think when he, some teachers hear that there's a long waiting list, it discourages them. And so we are, are very good now with social media, right, in this department. Can we push that out on social media, on Twitter, on Facebook? To show, you know, sign up, um, yeah, you're, you know, can't, you know, please sign up, please consider this. These are opportunities. But we don't, like I can see with budget negotiations and, and wise use of money, we don't know what to ask for, what to allocate, if we don't know what the demand is, right? So that would be, I think, a good way for us to ascertain what the demand is.
And we, one of the things that we just started, and it's Bonnie Short, who I was principal in Lee County, who's here with us now as a, uh, one of our administrators in ARI. They have started a, um, a newsletter for their 60-ish regional folks. And so they will push that out to their regional literacy folks. Then they send it to me and I put it in my curriculum email blast. So that is where also we're going to penetrate even more because those regional folks talk to the locals all the time. They're in their buildings as much, you know, virtually or, so yes, we are, because that's our goal, is we've, we've got the money. We've got the money.
We've made that clear. They, they can use, in fact, it's in their ESR two plan. They can, like, if they say, "I want to start a cohort in Jacksonville City and just do my own cohort." They can use their ESR two money for that.
Yes.
If they, but we also can use state reserves. But that's, I just want to make, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's.
We just want everybody to know, money is not the issue. And you may never, ever hear me say that again, except during this ESR time.
Yes.
But, um, but there is so much money for math and reading PD in the ESR funds. That, and that's where we want to focus a lot of it because those will be, there won't be ongoing expenses. Once we get people trained, there'll be new people coming in, but the big shift is not.
Well, and the colleges are now doing it. So new people coming on board should be trained in their college prep programs. And then one last question dealing with letters. In the science of reading, ELA textbook committee. When we were approving the textbook committee, I didn't think to ask how many that were nominated had been trained in letters, had been trained in science of reading. Can we be assured that a large number that are serving on that committee, especially for the low grades? Um, not, I mean, it's important for all, it's particularly important for kids.
Well, let me tell you how I think we're going to handle, how, how we are planning on handling that. It's a little different than what you just asked. Um, because we can't, can't guarantee, because that committee's been approved, so.
Well, I, I know.
And they've already started work a little bit. They, they had one meeting, I think, but they didn't have anything to work on yet because we didn't have the, uh, ELA course of study approved yet. So, but they're just organized. But here's what we're going to do, talk to Mark Dixon. Is Mark here? I love he's here.
No, he said he paid his dues last time.
Paid his dues, okay. So we, um, you know, he chairs the literacy task force for us, or not chairs, he coordinates it. Ms. Ziegler's on there, represents the board. So what we talked about is they are going to use a, they have a subcommittee that's going to do a core reading materials vetting. And they have core reading materials. So those are basically reading books, but it may go a little further than that, like spelling for grades K through three. And the literacy task force is going to go ahead and start that process now, very soon. There's an RFP going out. They asked me last night to review it around 7:00 o'clock and I asked them to please wait till Friday. And I could, if, if you just hold off two days. Um, but we're going to do that tomorrow. And then, it's because we have to do the RFP, but it'll be the literacy task force, I think it's actually a subcommittee, not all of them, that will be reviewing the submissions. And this will be in addition to the textbook, um, thing, but the process. But what they want to do is go ahead and do the review before the textbook committee gets too far into their work. They're, they're hoping. Their, their hope is that the, the literacy task force vetting can be done by around the first of June. No commitments, but that's the oath. And then they can turn that over to the textbook committee and say, we as the early childhood reading specialist, think these are the best books out there. Now, I'm a little cautious, as you can tell, because of my hesitancy. The textbook, I mean, there's a very clearly a law about how things have to flow. And so it, it is possible that like somebody who submitted for the literacy task force vetting may turn around and not submit for the textbook committee. Like if they think they're, they're, well, I think my ratings are low, we, I mean, they may just say, we're not, so they may be on one list and not on the other list, or vice versa. They can, you know, if they are, if they submit to the textbook official list, but they skip the literacy task force, we can't legally tell them, well, you can't be on the textbook list because of that. But we can give a lot of weight to that. So, and it'll also help our districts. Uh, uh, a lot of our districts are talking about not waiting on the textbook process, but going ahead and buying new reading books for K three with their federal money because they have so much federal money. And so that's why we wanna give them, but again, we wanna get the literacy task force working ahead. So I think it's gonna meet the same objective before you're going. I think that's a good idea. But, but I also wouldn't wanna go back and remove people from the textbook committee and say, we're gonna replace you with somebody. And I know that's not where you're going, but I just wanted to, just wanna.
Well, to have that expertise, to have that science of reading knowledge that I frankly don't have.
Me neither.
But I respect those who do and I want to learn from them. And I want them to have input so that we can choose the best, we can recommend, we don't choose, recommend the best textbooks for our school systems.
Well, and you have to be cautious, and we've talked about this in the literacy, uh, subcommittee, is that the publishers have this tendency to slap a sticker on it and says it's whatever is the talking point of the, of the year.
That's right.
They'll slap on, this, this correlates or it, it follows all the rules of the, you know, science of reading. Well, guess what? That's why you need to have it vetted. Right, exactly. Just that little sticker might say it's, you know, whatever, you know, you gotta be careful. Those stickers are easily put on and are easily removed.
I have a letters question that piggybacks on yours. If I, rather than circle back respectfully, thank you. I just wanna understand the structure and I don't wanna get too deep in the weeds. But I was speaking with a teacher who is very much for letters. This is a trained person. This is a, what I would call a very mature teacher. And she, she's been doing it a long time. And she expressed to me that it is, she is seeing that it is most successful when there is coaching happening in the classroom after a teacher is fully trained. I realize I'm preaching to the choir here.
No, that's.
But I don't think I fully understand the structure of the coaching piece. And because when I hear regional coaches, I'm thinking big regional. But, so now I'm thinking more like down on the local level. So I'm thinking of one of my little counties that has a lot of struggling readers. And we have new trained letters, teachers that are working on this process in the classroom. Who's coaching them?
So right now with the, it, it's their locals that then feeds up to their regionals.
Okay.
Um, the regional coaches and some of them, with the two years that it takes, some of them are going through it. So the coaching would not be at its pinnacle yet while they're going through it with them. But that is the.
The build out though, is to have plenty of coaching going on?
Yes, yes ma'am. Now, they're coaching, but it, they're doing, they're running the coaching cycle and they're doing those things that are embedded in our coaching framework that we've developed. And they were all part of that, not all, but representation. But to say that they're all supporting that, they may be going through it with them right now. So they're learning, learning together. But that's where they also, um, I don't wanna speak to the specificity, but I know that anytime they, they run into those questions, that we reach out to Laura Wolf and they're able to provide that support. Not in the classroom as much right now because of COVID, but they're very amenable to helping.
It sounded to me like it's more observation, what I would consider at the local level, a ride along, an observation and how, uh, uh, physically in the space coaching. And so I just wasn't sure if that was a part of our framework.
Yes, and because they build in their bridge to practice where they, they go, they go to the training, either blended with face to face before it was shut down, you know. Then they go back to the classroom and work that, see, and then bring it back. But when we have all of our regional coaches that are already trained, you know, when we get to that point, then they will be able to be side by side coaching with them during the bridge to practice instead of after. And so because this, the way that some states, they, they don't ever, well, prior to, they wouldn't ever have this opportunity like we built, were built on like what Ms. Bell said back years ago at its pinnacle. And so we're fortunate to have that. We're just back ending now with having to get them trained.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have, Mrs. Ziegler, I have, um, a question, but I also would like to make a point, which is actually sort of a question as well because, um, is it appropriate to speak at this point?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, couldn't you, and I appreciate, um, Mrs. West bringing up, uh, letters. And this is a question that has actually been asked by many people. And I appreciate the input. I, it's been very helpful in the development of the new reading, uh, programs and standards, even though I don't serve on the council and I appreciate your service, Mrs. Ziegler. I know it's a lot of time and I do appreciate that. And I appreciate your background and I think that you are an excellent representative. And it, it really does make a difference, um, coming from a blue ribbon school. And of course, all of, uh, your, not only your experience in the classroom, but your education. But that said, I wanted to add, the question is, the difference between, um, something that we had as a board question in work sessions last, at the end of last year, but we never had the opportunity to address. And it has to do with, and thank you again, Mrs. West, for mentioning letters. Nihouse. Um, I received an, a message. Uh, it was from an email and it was from Louisa Moats. There has been a question about some expertise that was quoted regarding accreditation, uh, versus, and approval of some Nihouse courses. And this is why I hoped that the board would have, and I know others did, I'm not the only board member, have the opportunity to address this. But the, for the record, this is a direct quote from what I received. It says from Louisa Moats, M O A T S. Uh, for the record, I have never reviewed the content of the Nihouse professional development. I have never, in quotation marks, approved anything offered by Nihouse. I am on a professional advisory board that has met once per year at IDA for general discussion about the organization's goals. I like and admire the staff at Nihouse. However, anyone who attributes, in quotation marks, accreditation or approval of their courses or products to me is mistaken. I know that we have, um, as a state and different individuals as well, a quote, and they like to refer to Mississippi. Mississippi did not use, and I know I served on a committee with the state superintendent, who's still the state superintendent in Mississippi, who was a part of this change in Mississippi. I've met with legislators. I know that, um, Dr. McCarty went to Mississippi and probably met with the same people that I know. I've served on committees, uh, even with Governor, former Governor Bryant. This is not something that was done using Nihouse, even though, as I know and you know, it is housed over in Mississippi. This was done, uh, and you, I'm sure Dr. Davis are aware of how it was done because it's, the success is out there and other states are going to Mississippi to find out how they did it. I just want to make it very clear that we need to reevaluate. And I know some of that goes back to this literacy council and certainly Mark Dixon, I guess, would have to address that. But there are differences between letters and Nihouse. And I think that we need to address that as a board, if we possibly can, have any input at this point. And it appears that we do have that opportunity. We need to be a part of that discussion. And certainly if changes need to be addressed, we need to do that as a board. I think it's important, I've seen the success in Alabama before during a time when Alabama was in Mississippi and people, including people from Massachusetts and Texas and Florida, were coming to Alabama to find out what we were doing because, you know, the progress that we were making. There were articles written about Alabama and there were also awards given, presented to Alabama. We were the ones who were getting all of the positive attention, not the negative attention. And I would hope that we would be aggressive in addressing, um, some concerns that have been shared by people who know what they're doing and have been doing this. As Mrs. West addressed, there are people who've been in the classroom, they know what works. And we need to ensure that we don't shortchange the children in this state and certainly those teachers and those who are given that opportunity to help students. That's it.
When Nihouse presented, I thought they did a fine job, but I was a little confused. They presented three options. And, and it was, you know, the hatch pack, the sedan, and then the Maserati version of what they were gonna do. And so I'm still not quite sure which option that we, that we're doing.
Yeah, it's.
For Nihouse.
They're doing the, the training through the regional in-service centers as far, they do the training and the coaching. Um, and it provides them with those resources in their hands that they can go back and use. Uh, and then the, the coaching that goes on throughout the school year.
Now, Elizabeth, is this the training, the two-year training that prepares them for the COT?
That is, that's an ad, I mean, that comes after they go through. It's like, I love to describe it in an easy format. And I also wanna make sure that in no way, it's hard to say that anything is ever the exact same. No, nothing is the same. That's why vendors are vendors because they have a product that is different in some way. They all have the same characteristics. So if I've ever said it is the exact same thing, no, no. But the, so the training that I would do as a teacher, um, is, I could, it's like my EDS. So I could do it cause it is gonna provide me with that information in this. It's gonna provide me with the resources, um, to go into the, you know, go back in the classroom and use. And then if I want to continue to pursue that, it counts towards that to you, you know. So that's a, that is one of the reasons when we looked at it also and looked at the success and, um, is that it, it provides that option because we knew that the boards, um, one of the board's goals, I can only speak for the two and a half years I've been here, is that y'all would love to have Colts in every, you know, district, every school. Yes. And so we wanted to be able, um, you know, and looking, uh, to, to be able to, that was a, a, a help for some that when they get in, they either, they're like, oh, I love it, I wanna keep going, you know, so. So yes, it's a, it's a standalone, but it can be a build upon if you want to go further. And we have several of our, um, like our principal coaches, the new, old, old name was principal coaches, but they've done both. They did letters, uh, Paula Young in North Alabama did letters as an administrator and the Nihouse training and said it has helped her tremendously be able to support her districts. So again, we are committed, I, I wanna speak for Dr. Mackey. We, I mean, he said, we're committed to being able to provide letters for every, every single person. I know one of the things we talked about even last week with another, uh, with Dr. Blair is the need to have something for the fourth through eighth graders, uh, middle school, you know. And we all know that that is, was a reality prior to COVID. And that's another, um, another area that we've, that we are committed to is looking at what can we provide our middle school teachers, um, and even high school. And, um, and we think it is, it's important to provide them with those resources. As a secondary teacher, I would, I need that more, you know, somebody else may not. And now if a secondary teacher says, I wanna go through letters, we, we're gonna pay for it, you know. But we also, uh, in, with that, looking at what they have for their fourth through eighth grade, um, that they built for that. And so, um, that is a, they call it a 440 maybe, I'd have to look back. But, um, and Mr., Dr. Blair actually had some experience with it years ago. So, so we're trying to also make sure that we provide that, you know, for the middle and high schools because with the law, we also know after third grade, we have to report until they meet those, until they don't have those reading deficiencies, which is good because I think sometimes they may get lost after third grade. So, so we can't just send them to fourth and fifth and sixth and seventh grade without any, you know, any, any support and training.
And I would support the principals as well going through because many elementary school principals, at least the ones I talked to, and I have no idea about the statistics, but were high school teachers. And then they are, become an elementary school principal and they not know much about how to teach reading.
Absolutely.
And so.
Well, and they have to know how to evaluate when they go through and they do the walkthroughs and all.
So if we could get current numbers on letters.
Yeah, oh yeah, I wrote that down.
On the number that have completed, both teachers and in possible grades or at least grade bands.
Okay.
And also, um, administrators as well.
Yes.
I would be very interested in that. And, and to encourage those who do the Nihouse. I remember Dr. Mackey one time with math and I'm sure he remembered this too. But, um, he, he was saying that numbers training, sometimes numbers might come before OGAP. That OGAP, OGAP is a gold standard. But perhaps it would go, some of them might go through numbers first and then move on. So perhaps Nihouse maybe could be seen the same way, this one week training, that they go through Nihouse first and then we encourage them. And I don't wanna, you know, so I don't want to say you have to choose one or the other.
Right.
Maybe, um, that, that they realize.
Oh, yeah.
I wanna encourage them to move on and get that, what, you know, we consider a gold standard of letters. And then I've got one other question to do with textbooks. And, and this again, when we built the rubric for, and all of us, everybody, um, built the rubric for the math textbooks. One thing I think all of us did was we surveyed our schools and we said, what would be most helpful to you in choosing the best textbook for your students? And I know they, I mean, they, they were verbose with me. They came back. And, and so perhaps we could get ahead of the game, uh, with ELA textbooks and, and go ahead and initiate that at the beginning. And it could be that some of the needs for ELA textbooks differ from those of math. They may not, I don't know. But I think that that would be a positive communication, PR gesture as well as very informative to get that information back from them. And it's, again, it's about service. How can we best serve you and allow you to serve your students? And, and then, and Dr. Boyd, I know you don't want a 40 category rubric, but perhaps we can go through and say, what were the most requested items? And, and then build a rubric that addresses those needs. Now, that's just a suggestion.
Well, and that, that absolutely is, you know, a great idea as we're researching and starting to put together, um, the rubrics that talk about to make sure also CTE is there with us because they're ongoing now. But we, we, our goal is that not only will the vendors use them and our state textbook committee it, but we want our locals because, to use them and know how to use them. So that is critical because they're going to have. So that is critical because they're going to have money that's outside of the seventy-five dollars that they get for, you know. So again, they're still, without those tools, then they're going to be spending on something that may or may not be aligned. So that, we definitely, I think I can get my friend Anna Morris over there to help me with that. She may run from me, but, um, because that will be very helpful. And we used everything that you, that y'all gave us from the math as we've been kind of just laying things out. We're, we're much more ahead of the game upfront, but yes, that's a great idea.
Well, and then.
Mrs. Decker? Oh, go ahead.
I need one to talk about letters. Ms. Bell, were you going to ask about letters in Nihouse? Can't hear you.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't know if they were still, uh, speaking. I just wanted to, I have two requests. Um, I'd like the peer-reviewed research on Nihouse. And also, um, I'd like a clarification and a commitment that the short-term Nihouse, and it is short-term, will never be a substitute for letters as Dr. McCarty has specified. I, I think that we need to ensure that we're not going to have, um, Nihouse replacing letters. As it has already been pointed out, it is important.
I don't, I don't.
Don't worry, that, you have that commitment, that would, that'd be like replacing a freight train with a pinto. It's, it's just not really possible because they're too different, so different. But so that's, that's a good, that we can do that.
Now, are we finishing the textbook or Dr. Davis or? Well, you may. But, um, okay, teacher shortages.
Yes, I'm back, I'm sorry, we're trying, Dr. Reynolds has gotten, he's, we don't know what happened, he said he dropped. We've sent him the link a couple of times trying to get him back on, but.
Is he on?
Uh, no. So anyway, I was distracted by that, but I'm back to you.
But, um, okay, the teacher shortage. And Parker just did a report, which suddenly when Parker does a report, and suddenly Maggie starts laughing, and I thought we could talk about this. But, okay, teacher shortage, and then, um, anyway, I know that we have a plan and just asking where we are in the plan. And then one concern, and, and this is like Ms. Bell has people, you know, reach out to her. I also had some people reach out to me and they said, Cynthia, something that, that we think is incorrect um, was the Education Commission of the States in their state-to-state reciprocity report said, we do not, that Alabama, they listed by state. They said Alabama does not have state-to-state reciprocity, which I fear that might inhibit some people from moving here.
We absolutely do.
Well, I thought we did it, and so I'm not sure who's in charge of reaching out to them. Okay, I'll, I'll print in the page so you can see.
Yes, I know exactly what you're talking about because they reach out to us before compiling the report. They reach out to us before compiling the report, so we can answer all the questions. Um, so if you look at the.
I'm sorry, I just thought I heard it was Bell.
Well, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
No, I was just going to say that if you have any concerns regarding the Commission of the States, I serve on the executive board. We can correct that.
All right, wait a minute. Um, Ms. Bell, we were having, you need to excuse me, I don't mean to. I don't think they heard you.
I'm sorry, I heard the Commission of the States, the, the actual, the visual's great, but the, it's hard to hear some of what is being said. But I did pick up on Education Commission of the States and some information that's been corrected. However, if it is, then we need to know, and I serve on the executive board and we can have that corrected. And we can certainly have the person from the department who can correct that call directly and I can tell them who to call to get it, um, immediately changed.
Okay.
So just, uh, let me know and we can take care of that anytime.
Okay, okay, all right. So the, the, you, they reach out to us before compiling those reports. Uh, so we responded to all the questions. And if you go and you look down at the questions, um, they're very specific questions that they ask in order to come up with whether or not, um, what the response is they want to put. So the question that they ask on the website is, do you offer full reciprocity? Meaning if someone is coming from, um, Mississippi, we just accept their certificate and give them what we have that's comparable. The answer to that is no, we do not do that. Yes, we do offer, uh, reciprocity with every state, all US territories, and the District of Columbia as well as Dodea. But there are some additional ancillary requirements that they have to meet. So for example, in Alabama, our ancillary requirements are the background clearance. When somebody applies, we don't just say, here's your certificate, these are the other things that you have to do. So we require that they do the background clearance. Um, if you are applying for an area such as, um, administration or school counseling, you also have to verify at least three years of experience. Um, and then the last one, I didn't bring it up here with me, the last one is the testing. So, but for the testing, we have three options. If they took a test to get their certificate in the other state, they aren't required to do it here. If they have three years of teaching experience or experience serving in that area, they don't have to do our test. If they don't meet either one of those, then we do require that they do, um, the test here in Alabama. So because we have those ancillary requirements, they consider us not to have full reciprocity.
Some of the states like Florida has a yes, but then it has an explanation.
Right.
I would love to be one of those states that has yes and then has what you just.
I'm, I'm going to be very honest in that, um, uh, some people are not just very upfront with what, what is required because they do have additional requirements. It's just not at the time that they apply for that initial certification. So for example, Mississippi has that, yes, they are. Um, but if you look further, and even if you go to Mississippi's website that I just pulled up there, they have the testing that's requirement, that's required unless you have passed the test in another state. So it's the way that you answer the question, um, I, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, so it's the way that we answer the question. If you want me to go back to rephrase it, to reflect, yes, with ex- ex- explanations, I'll be glad to do that. But the truth of the matter is, right.
Had said, because I, this could inhibit people from moving to Alabama, I believe. If you, if I pulled this up and saw, no. And I'm an experienced teacher, passed all the tests, no background issues, I might encourage, like, let's say my spouse is being transferred and I'm planning, you know, I might say, no, no, we're not moving there because they've got no reciprocity. Whereas all these other states are yes, yes, yes.
There's only eight other states that says yes. But of those eight, there are probably half that there's a yes there, but then there's an explanation there. So if, if that is what you'd like for me to go back and to answer those questions in that manner, I will versus being upfront with them as to what is required.
I think we have to be truthful.
Right.
Right, but if we could also say like Arizona does, yes, but, you know, I think it puts a positive spin as far, in, in, um, instead of a, a negative one, and it tells the truth. But it also is immortal, is the glass half full or half empty, right? And so I think you want to be happy.
And, and we can, like I said, the question is, do you offer full reciprocity? And the, the answer actually is no, but we'll go back and we'll, I'll contact them and take a look at, um, how we can change the wording.
And I think Ms. Bell has helped you.
Yeah, well, it, it's not a problem, we have a contact that we, that we can contact to, to update the information there.
Dr. Reynolds?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Are there any other, um?
I got one more.
The budget, I'm out of that.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Richardson.
I would like, I know that, uh, most of our schools, high schools have been giving the eleventh grade, the eleventh graders a ACT. Could we possibly get an update either from Dr. Mackey or Dr. Boyd on the assessments that are expected from our school districts for the spring?
Sure. Um, well, I'll start and then after I mess it up, we'll let Dr. Boyd fix it, what about that?
That sounds great, thank you.
So, so we are requiring the assessment, so that'd be math and reading assessment, the new A-CAP in grades two through eight, the ACT for high school juniors, my son took it this week too. And then there are certain, the alternate assessments also. The testing window is open, as you mentioned, uh, ACT is the one that's been, that has started. The A-CAP will start next week, that window will be open. And it will be open for longer this year than, uh, typical, so they can, so get students in and out. The most questions we have had have been from, um, students that are virtual only, not wanting to come back into the school building to take the test. And that is a, it's, it's complicated because they, um, they, I mean, the test is required and there's not a virtual option. Now, the, um, you know, as you know, it's not part of their grade though. And that gets into where we are with this federal waiver that we, we've sent you a little bit about. We know, we don't know everything, Ms. Martin may have to save me here too, but. So the, we just this week got the actual federal waiver, even though the Biden administration had, um, uh, and I'm going to go back, I'm actually going to go back to the fall and remind you, we, we got a directive from the, the former Secretary of Education back in October or November that there would be no waivers for the spring. And so that was what we were operating under until this last month. Um, even when the Biden administration came in, the first few days, they indicated that they were still on no waivers, but they were considering it. So now, now we have a waiver process from them. And this is what they are, so they are offering to waive, among other things, the participation rate. But you still have to have the state test. So the participation rate under federal laws normally ninety-five percent. Our, um, technical advisory folks have told us that we really need about seventy percent participation to get valid numbers. And we need to set a new foundation, you know, floor scores, cut scores for our test. So we need seventy percent participation and we need seventy percent participation in every subgroup, not just overall. So we definitely want all of our students to take the test.
Okay.
And it's now, you did not ask this question, Dr. Richardson, so I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm going to go a step further because it has come to me every day this week at least once, well, what if a parent just says no and they don't bring their child to school? Well, I mean, we've dealt with that before, we, we've had parents, there is an opt-out procedure, um, in, at the local school level. Um, I know that, that principals, I understand, are doing everything they can to encourage people to come in. They're offering, um, in some places like, um, a day where the, the traditional, the student, the in-person students are not going to be at school and they just bring in virtual students to do the assessment. So there are some options out there, but, but a- all in all, that's kind of where we are with assessment. Now, the waiver process goes even deeper than that, there are other things, and Ms. Martin might could talk about those, I could, I cannot off the top of my head. But some things are not waived. So it's not like everything just goes away. But the main things they are waiving are participation rate, the requirement to have a state report card, which with us would be our A through F report card, the requirement to identify schools as comprehensive, uh, for comprehensive school improvement or CSI. There is a provision to extend, uh, targeted school improvement and ATS I, which is, I forget what the A stands for. Additional targeted school improvement. Those are extending to four years instead of three years. And so there are some changes there, but there's still, um, with, with the caveat that the state must, when we submit our waiver, we must sign that we will bring all those things back in twenty twenty-two. So there's obvious, it's clearly a one-year waiver. And the, um, on the state end, as you know, the state legislature has a resolution, it's not passed both houses yet, but it says, clearly the first line says, the State Board of Education, and then it goes on to things it wants the department to do. And that is to waive the state report card and the, um, failing schools list is the other thing. So otherwise, it completely lines up with the federal waiver process on accountability, except that the state resolution includes the, um, failing schools list as well. So if we do that, we will not do a state, um, failing schools list. And those are, um, you know, if y'all, I mean, certainly would love to hear from the board, the board's not required to vote on either one of those. We, under the federal rule, I'm required to notify the governor that I'm submitting a waiver, I think's the way they, they've said it. And obviously, we've had, we've already had conversations about that. But, but we, you know, when we get the waiver ready, we are going to, we'll let the board know about it and what we're going to, what, kind of what we've been able to negotiate with Washington and those things. But it's not exactly clear-cut. For instance, that participation rate, they, they're letting states suggest a participation rate lower than ninety-five percent. But there's, it's a little bit confusing because there's not a, a national rate now. I mean, nationally, it's ninety-five percent, now they're telling states, well, make us an offer. And then if we reject it, we, we'll negotiate. So, so that's a little bit, in some ways, it would have been easier if they had just said, the new rate's going to be eighty percent or seventy percent or something like that because it's maybe a little bit hard on us, but Ms. Martin, is there more you want to add to that?
Yes, just. I want to ask a question, so you're saying in line with the participation rate not being ninety-five percent and we're going to look at seventy percent, we also would say then in the waiver that we would not be required to do the A through F report card or the CSI schools, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
On the federal?
That is correct.
And in the state level, there's a resolution on the table that we would not have the failing schools list just for a year, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Martin has another, I've missed something there.
Just as a reminder, with the federal waiver possibility, there's a thirty-day public comment period. So once we get the draft completed, we would actually load it on our website for thirty days. And I know we're referencing the A through F, but really what the waiver does is waive the accountability system and the indicator connected. So when we speak of our academic achievement indicator, that's where the calculation of that ninety-five percent comes into the calculation of that, as well as the public reporting on the report card, that ninety-five percent of our enrolled students take the assessment. So it's actually, there's a template that the United States Department of Education, they provided to us. And what we're going to do is make certain, and we try to follow that template, but put Alabama's desires in that template because there's an area that we're able to go in and explain what waiving these items would afford us to do. And we want to make certain that it's afforded us the opportunity to go in and really focus on learning losses and gaps with the data that we have. But again, still, we're going to go in and hold districts accountable for results. But we are able to waive our targets as well. So we don't want targets sitting out here and we get our A-CAP data in and we say, school A, they're here, but these were their targets, they missed their targets. So we want to make sure that we take every opportunity to be proactive, but still have data available that's going to guide teaching and learning.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. McCarty, question? This is a request, um, as you know, you know, we made our budget request and, and I just, uh, the legislature, it's a request that we get updates and I would say in real time if possible, um, you can certainly text, I think most of us. I'd like to know when they are talking about the budget, right?
Sure.
Because as you know, we, we are all very passionate about, um, especially certain items in the budget. One thing would be, um, cult stipends and especially some of the new things like cult stipends, um, funding the TIRs once again, Sandy. Um, we want to do that. Um, and, and I guess I, I'd like to know in real time what the discussion is. So perhaps, you know, if we need to reach out to people, we know while it's still in the discussion phase until, you know, instead, I don't want to find out after you know, the fact that we missed an opportunity.
So, um, that's a, that's a very good request. Here's what I know right now, um, we believe, um, I've met with Senator. We believe, I've met with Senator Orr every day this week and we're answering a lot of questions for him. Would not seen the budget, obviously, that he would not, there's no way he'd ever share something like that. But we believe they're going, the Senate committee will meet on Tuesday out of cycle, because normally they meet on Wednesdays. They will meet on Tuesday out of cycle and that he will give the budget to his committee members. And they will pass it out of the Senate on Thursday. So, so you should be able to see it by Tuesday night and you'll have Wednesday to contact anybody you want to contact. And it'll be the same as us and then Thursday.
Can you send us the link with somebody here's or, or however, whatever's the best way to do it?
Yes, I think they'll meet in room eight twenty-four, which means they'll be, you can watch it live. Yeah, we'll do that. The Senate does not post, they don't officially tell you what they're gonna discuss until the meeting starts usually. But rumor is that they're gonna discuss it on Tuesday.
And I'm not trying to put you in an uncomfortable.
No, no, that's fine. I'm just telling you that it may not happen. I'm just telling, I'm not, I don't want you to say on Wednesday morning, you said the budget's gonna be in committee Tuesday and it wasn't. But I think it will be in committee on Tuesday. And then it will be on the floor of the Senate on Thursday because the pro tem has said that he wants the budget out of the Senate by the spring break, which of course starts the next Monday. So, so pretty much all that has to happen next week. We'll send you, if they're gonna have it, it's gonna be a public, public meeting that you can watch. We'll send you the link and then we will, the, and it's actually always the same link, by the way, because you just go to that committee room. So once we send it, any other committee meeting is there. And then the floor action, same way, you watch the floor action livestream. Now, as far as getting a copy of the budget, after the committee, typically after the committee adjourns, within an hour or two, we can get a copy of the budget. And we'll, and we'll share it with you. As soon as it's public, we'll share it. We'll just.
Yes, it's just a request for information, just to keep us apprised of what's going on.
But it's coming pretty fast. My suspicion is they'll probably have two committee meetings, like one to introduce the budget. Then they'll meet again the next day to vote on the budget and then the next day it'll be on the Senate floor for action. So in some years, it take, like the, well, the general fund budget, I got congratulatory texts this week on the budget passing the House. Well, that's not our budget, it's the general fund budget. Just, you know, people, it's a lot of stuff, a lot of moving parts. But the general fund budget took longer. So like it was, it was introduced one week, they had a week to look at it or maybe two weeks before they came back and voted. But the Senate process is much faster generally. So, so that's what I think will happen. So you can probably expect to get a copy of it on Tuesday evening. And then Wednesday, I suspect they'll vote again, they'll vote on Wednesday. They don't have to, they can vote it out on Tuesday. But it's my understanding, even the senators have not seen the budget yet. And so they would, even the draft, so they would get it on Tuesday, reconvene on Wednesday and then have it on the floor for action Thursday morning. Then it would transmit to the House and start the House process in, after spring break, late March or, or April too. So that, that's the process I think is gonna happen. And yes, we will keep you up to date on it as it moves through. Senator Orr's working on some other things that I think will be, you know, there's proposed teacher raise. He's talked about, he even mentioned in committee this week that he had been getting information from us on the salary matrix. So he's looked at adjustments to the salary matrix. And so I think you'll see some very different things, but again, I can't say for sure. There was something else about the budget I wanted to say though.
Oh, Mrs. Ziegler, let me just say the budget will be up next week. I'm not, it's not a policy, it just, it will be according to what I'm understanding from legislators. And room eight twenty-five is where you need to go. I'd also like to request that, I assume Jessica would be the one, but I think board members need to see House Joint Resolution Seventy-two. And I assume, I don't know that it's been signed by the governor, but you can send it to all of us and I think that would be helpful. But I would hope that in the future too, that we will receive information for, for where it happens. And yes, we all understand that we don't control the legislature and we don't know when things will actually happen. However, there are ways to find out what is planned and I think that's important for us to have in advance, not the morning of. And sometimes that is the case, you don't know anything until that morning. However, for the most part, there are ways to find out what will be up before various committees and where they will be meeting. And they can be canceled, but we all have those under, we have that understanding. And of course, yes, the public can view these meetings. So please, I think the board member needs to be, board members need to be involved and we need to know. And again, it's important for us to be engaged and I know that you are for the most part. I think all board members stay in touch with their legislators. But I know that Senator Orr has publicly, publicly said that it will be up next week. It's not a secret. So thank you for that opportunity to share. And again, things can be canceled, but at the same time, there are ways to have, to find out and to get the word out there in, in advance. And I think that's important for us to know and not after the fact, which has been the case, if we sometimes even get that information.
Okay, well, I think that ends agenda item number two unless somebody else has a question?
I do have a question.
Okay, Dr. Chestnut.
Is there a quality for this academic year? I've had several educators and parents to ask me about it. He explained it very clearly, but it would be beneficial to have it if he could email it.
Yes, ma'am. She said he'd be glad to. I'm not sure if she did. Is there anything else, Dr. Chestnut?
That's it.
Thank you. All right, so yes, Dr. Boyd will be glad to do that. At this moment, I have one ten, we're gonna break for lunch. And, oh, we'll reconvene in twenty minutes. So everybody, oh, and before I forget, who was it? I think they're going to stream.
Yes, that's right. The art contest, since you couldn't go over to the Capitol and see the visual arts, they're gonna have, they're gonna be rolling during lunch.
So the board members that are virtual can be watching it as well.
Right.
You wanna make sure that, grab your sandwich and turn your screen and watch, it's gonna be lovely. About eight.
Ms. Ziegler.
You say, about eight to ten minutes.
Ms. Ziegler, Wayne Reynolds, before you adjourn.
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding from the conversations that we are gonna get a link to be able to listen to the legislative discussions. Is that correct?
Yes. It's actually, what, yes, we'll send it to you. So it's not a link we can generate. It's always there, it's on the legislature's site. I'm not gonna ask you to find it, but you just go to the legislature's website, state's in it. Use the room, but we'll send that to you so you don't have to go search for it.
That's the idea, thank you.
Is that on Allison?
It's on Allison, yeah. That's all you do, yeah, it's the same.
The resources and then media on the top.
You can do it yourself.
Twenty minutes.
You can do it yourself.
Thank you. But I can. Dr. McCarty, I'm gonna catch you for a second. Tell you something so you don't get shot.
That all been silly.
I don't, yeah, that's why I don't want to even get involved with that.
It's just, it's just, we can, we can cope out of the 500.
No problem, we're not in trouble.
Yeah.
I think it definitely will.
It will cycle through, so depending on how long you are going to go.
So they're responsible.
Oh, thank you.
I love it.
I just want to share with that friend out there.
So, um, yes. So do you have a, because they are winners.
Yeah, I'm proud.
No problem, we're not in trouble.
I love my little one.
I'm a close hearted guy.
And then seeing how he was meditating the way that his body kept over.
That is so indeed.
Wait, what is it happening?
I hear him come back to work.
Oh, yeah, no, sure, sure.
He gives me just an expo.
Also, I think you're partnering with, uh, local, for the, some, all three times.
What I think, orientation, this is the end.
Everybody does.
I think that is, I think that is, I think that is.
Oh, yeah, no, sure, sure.
He gives me just an expo.
Also, I think you're partnering with, uh, local, for the, some, all three times.
What I think, orientation, this is the end.
Everybody does.
I think that is, I think that is, I think that is.
It's like a, it's like a, I don't know.
Doing something.
They should, so they just, sure.
Okay, we're more programing in Saturday, next year.
Can I join?
Yes, yes, she was, she was, she was, she was.
Yes, I love it.
One day they tell us in our new building, which, you know, I'm complaining about our new building, but tornadoes destroyed our public agency. And so we've been in a, it was a closed down, that's why we're, they told us to quit.
We're in.
Yeah.
We're in.
Yep.
I want to welcome everybody back.
I'll make sure you hear me.
Oh, not him, sorry.
I'm almost there.
That's okay.
Here's the weekly video.
So I need to bang it again?
Uh, probably.
We want to welcome everybody back to the work session for the Alabama State Board of Education. Before we get into the meat of the agenda, I hope all of you were able to watch the presentation about the outstanding artwork that we were seeing and the windows that we had and were presenting their resolutions, but it just shows what talented students we have across the state of Alabama. So if anybody within the sound of our voice is hearing that, we just want to applaud you and thank you and we cannot wait for next year when we're all back together again. So for all your hard work. And then another thing before I go on, I wanted to clarify something. I don't have showing my daughter's picture. I just wanted to make sure that it was clarified that the literacy task force, we have not yet reviewed nor recommended a professional learning. So we just wanted to let us just start it. That continuum of teacher development is in the process. So I didn't want any uncertainty about what we were trying to represent. So I just wanted to let you all know that we have not yet completed that too far. So with that, I think that's all of our qualifiers and corrections and any other corrections or anything?
No corrections. Let me come back though. So the, for those of you who are here, we went, I went during lunch break upstairs and got a copy of the resolution that Representative Collins and a group of representatives proposed on the accountability. We see it, it did not change from what we sent you last Friday or the Friday before in the Friday update. So it's the same as what you have in your email, but we have your hard copy and we'll be glad to send it to everybody again for the folks who are not here. But it has now passed the Senate and is on its way to the governor to be signed. And I think she will. So that's, that's that. And then.
Dr. Mack, Mr. Roman.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Crowell, I want to make sure, can y'all hear us? Dr. Richardson, Dr. Chestnut, can y'all hear us okay?
Yes, very well. Thank you.
Thank you. We just wanted to make sure. Thank you, ladies.
And the other, the other piece I got, and you ladies, gentlemen on the line again, don't have this yet. This is hot off the press, but I got a text at 1:18 that this bill had been filed. So, so there has been discussion, well, there's been discussion for years about differentiating pay schedules. Senator Orr and Representative Poole have been asking a lot of questions about pay schedules this, this session. And so they, Senator Chastain and Senator Orr have filed a bill today. And y'all don't have it yet because I don't have the electronic version, but we'll get it to you this afternoon. That would propose a new pay scale for math and science teachers in grade six through 12. They would, and I can tell you a little bit about it, but I have not read the final bill, so I don't want to get into too much detail. But let me tell you how it's, how it's designed. If you look over on page four, to get the new pay schedule, and again, this is just a proposed bill, not even been assigned to a committee. But it would require teachers to have a math or science, a true math or science certificate, be teaching math and science full time in grade six through 12. So, so a generalist certificate, like an elementary school certificate would not work. They'd have to have a math or science certificate, be teaching math or science full time in grade six through 12. And they would have to commit to either attain the National STEM Institute certification or NBCT in math and science. And then they put a provision in that the department could eventually adopt something different. But you know, as right now, off the top of my head, I don't know what that would be. But I know the Senator Orr's thinking on that was five years from now, there may be something else that we want and then we would be able to not have to change the law. They must relinquish their tenure and can get a significant pay increase. And they would go on, they'd become a contracted teacher, a free agent.
A free agent.
And they, and there's an additional $5,000 if they work in a hard to staff school, which I understand will be ours to determine. So we're, we'll be working through that. There is, there's a probationary, they would have to start, I saw that a minute ago, they would have to start with a probationary contract, but after, within three years, they would have to become a more permanent type contract. And those would be three to six years at a time. So a board could issue a six-year contract or as low as three-year contract for the, my word, not theirs, permanent contract. And I do know this because I was asked this question and unless they've changed it, you would still get your NBCT stipend on top of this. So, so if you had the STEM stipend, if you had the STEM certification, you could qualify for this, but you, but you don't get a extra bump for that because we want to push NBCT. I know that Senator Orr has also said he wants to bump up the NBCT scholarship fund this year in hopes that more people will want to do this.
Good.
If, when you look at the whole piece, and you don't have the matrix here, and I don't know that that's even been published yet, but I know their goal was that our math and science teachers would be among the highest paid in the country. And my understanding that a math or science teacher with 30 years' experience, if they were in a hard to staff school and they had NBCT and they had a doctorate, the highest degree, then they would be making around $92,000.
Wow.
Now, that's not everybody. I said, that's 30 years' experience with a doctorate, with NBCT in a hard to staff school. But on the low end, a person with their bachelor's degree, no NBCT, if they had the National STEM certificate, a bachelor's degree and no experience, they would start out paying a little above $45,000, I think, whereas a teacher normally would start at just over $40,000. So it's about a $5,000 difference on the low end and can become like a $35,000 difference on the high end. No, not 35, probably 25. But, and then don't ask me about every step in between because I don't have it. But, but we'll, I think we've got the bill. I will ask them for the rest, you know, the matrix. It creates a new matrix, so we'll try to get that to you very soon too. But anyway, just been filed. And for those of you that are watching, we'll, we'll send it to you, to that, this afternoon. It's, and you can, if you're, if you are savvy with going on, it's SB 327. So you can go on the Senate's website and just download it, but I will get it sent to you this afternoon. Okay. So that's an update. That's a big, that's a big piece of news. And we'll see now where it goes.
Okay. Moving on to number three, resolution to modify the pass and praxis scores. Is that, Dr. Peacock?
Oh, come on, Dr. Peacock. I looked right there and missed you guys. It's been a whole month.
Okay. I've been working with Dr. Hall. We've had some conversations about the family and consumer science praxis score. Now, I'll preface all of this with saying that all of us involved in this process right now, out of all of us, none were here when this particular score was established. So we've had to do a little history digging. We've had to put some pieces together. But basically, and I explained a little bit of this when we talked about reading last month, when you have a new test that comes down, whether it's in an area where we haven't tested previously or whether it's a new test that we're going to begin to use, ETS hosts these multi-state standard setting studies. We're always invited to those. We do all that we can to make sure Alabama is well represented in those studies. And a group of educators and specialists in those particular fields come together. They look at the test that is going to be used and they make a determination on what they think is a reasonable score. Now, currently Alabama, in every area except family and consumer science, we use that multi-state score. We trust that score. Again, it's, it's established by educators, of which we're a part of that team, and we, you know, we feel like that is a good score to use. At the time that this particular test, the family and consumer test 5122, at the time that it came on board, the standard setting study was done and the recommendation from that group was a 153. Well, there was some discussion in Alabama at that time and they did not feel that that was the score that we wanted to use in Alabama. So we did a separate study in Alabama. And again, this is me putting history together. Some of you may know more than I do. But we put a separate study together with Alabama educators and the decision was made for Alabama to use a 161, which is eight points higher than the multi-state score. It's a, it's a pretty big jump.
It's a pretty big jump.
It really is. And, and again, I think you guys know, I fielded a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails from people when they're concerned about either one not being able to pass the test themselves or school systems where they have empty spots with a great pool of applicants that they know would be wonderful in the classroom, but they can't, you know, they can't meet that score. So I do get a lot of those calls. I think Career Tech has also received a good many of those calls. So the conversation came about that, you know, maybe we needed to look at that again and maybe it would be best for Alabama, particularly in light of the teacher shortage, that we looked at returning to that multi-state score. So Dr. Hall and I met with Dr. Boyd, talked through all of this, and we are in favor, of course, with your approval, of moving back to that multi-state score for Alabama. Many of the calls that I get from applicants and from school systems, they've met the score and exceeded the score, but they just can't quite get to that 161, which it's, it's a pretty big gap there. And again, when we use that score, that standard setting score in every other area, and I know this board worked very hard several years ago, we had some that we weren't quite at that level. And so we've been working over the years now. We have everything where we are meeting that national average, but it just doesn't make a lot of sense that this one is set so much higher. So that's, that is the summary of the resolution. That's what we're wanting to do. We feel like that is best for Alabama, certainly best with the teacher shortage and best for the area of family and consumer science. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have that I can answer.
Do any of my board members have any questions for?
Yes, Mrs. Ziegler, of course I have a question. How many states actually have higher scores than perhaps even Alabama at this point, but it higher than the average? And I remember the discussion and of course, it's been part of this history because when I was first elected, we were, Alabama was prohibited, as you know, from having any type of teacher assessment. And that goes, and that was because of the federal courts and an agreement that was reached. And we were thankfully able to undo that with the help of a federal judge who is, he still serves, but he is facing retirement at this point. But we had remediators who mediated, I should say mediators, not remediate, but we went down with the, we had lower scores than the average in the beginning because the mediation was out of our hands. And I remember the discussion trying to increase the score because the quality obviously was a concern. But it's, and we didn't have this particular assessment from the beginning. What, if you can provide a list of those states that have higher assessments or scores required, I would very much appreciate that.
Absolutely. I can do that. I can tell you off the cuff, I don't have those numbers for you right now. It's not a problem to get that. And I, I'm glad that you were here and part of that history and you remember a lot of that as well. I can tell you that as of September of 2018, we had, Alabama had moved to the multi-state score. So we had caught up with everyone. We're, like you said, we started out below in several areas. We had caught up with that score in every area except the math, and now we are there with our secondary math as well. So we're where we need to be in all of the other areas. I'm sure there are some states that do use a higher score, but at this point in time, I don't have those numbers, but it's certainly something that I can get and share.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
It would be interesting to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I'm assuming four, five and six, we consider bundled together?
I think so. They're not, there's, those are typical reviews. And these are not, so four is the beginning process. You're authorized in the beginning of a review. It's not at UAH. The five is extending programs that are already approved at Spring Hill. But I mean, they're not, so it's, it's the kind of the end process. And then the next one's the same way.
So we're good to go?
Good to go.
We're going to move on since we bundled four, five and six. We're going to go on to number seven about to announce the intent to amend the Alabama Administrative Code pertaining to public school governance.
This, Mr. Stevens, he didn't, I'm not sure if he came back. He asked me if there was, if he would be needed this afternoon. He might be. So Dr. Davis can help with this too. Let me tell you what's the beginning of it. These two are the same. So they are adopting an emergency rule and then a permanent rule. Is that, am I right about that? Come up here, Dr. Davis.
Yes, sir.
We'll have any.
I got it. Got it.
Have, so what we're doing is updating the code. It looks like it's a big, it's a lot of paper. This started out with a problem with social security numbers. So we don't use social security numbers anymore. We use student identification numbers. And we don't even collect social security numbers. And we really don't want our districts collecting them. But in the process, we found out the code still says that districts have to collect social security numbers. And we, you know, so we want to take that out and clean it up. And in the process of doing that, people in the instructional division kept finding other things that we don't do anymore either that are still in the code. So they have done a complete overhaul. And you'll see sections, things we don't do anymore that aren't required, that are stricken. So this is one of those things that comes to you in work session. We can discuss it today. It would come to the board next month for a vote to announce the intent to make it permanent and then come for the board in June for a permanent rule. But there is a caveat because this social security thing is a problem because we're, we're moving over from I now to the new power school. And so the new power school we have built with no, like it doesn't even, there's not a field for social security number. And it caused alarm when there, somebody realized that, you know, in the code, it still says social security number. And so, so I told Dr. Davis, I said, well, we can do it as an emergency rule. So we make it clear that when we move to the new system, we are not going to collect that data. And then we'll follow it up with a permanent rule. So that's why you see it as an emergency rule. We normally don't do that. Emergency rules for Ms. McCray and Dr. Chestnut, an emergency rule we can adopt for six months. And then if the permanent rule doesn't follow it, it goes away after six months. And so we, we, we don't use it much. Occasionally, we do ask the board to adopt an emergency rule. So it becomes, in effect, the day the board votes on it. But it only lasts for six months. And then in the meantime, we come back with the permanent rule change. And then my last piece of that, and I know I've been too long, but, so that also gives us a chance, next month, we would ask you to adopt the emergency rule. But then if between next month and June, we came back and said, well, wait a minute, there's some, actually some language in here we don't want to make permanent or we'd like to do, but we can change it before we adopt it permanently. Okay. So I've probably just muddied the water. And I don't know if you want to try to go through this now or if y'all want to take it with you. And then next month, let's spend more time on it. After you've had time to look through it, it's, it'd be completely up to you.
Ms. Bell?
Yes, thank you. I do have a question regarding the changes that are underlined that you didn't mention. And it's, one is on page 65 of the document. There's another one on 74, and I've probably missed the others because I just received the packet as printed and I appreciate the printed copy. It's so much better and cheaper for me, you know, I have to use my ink. But it's, especially for a long one. But that said, on page 64, and then again on 74, there's reference and underline, so I assume that means that it's new, that any school, school setting not accredited by an, and then this is the underlying part, and you can read it yourself, that institutional accrediting agency recognized by the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Education or other organizations approved by the State Board of Education. I'd like to know how this, and then at the bottom, it does have some more must pass the state. And of course, they corrected the basic skills. I'm sure that's just cleaning it up. And then on page 74, it refers to online course delivery that must be recognized, must be from institutional accrediting agencies. I'd like to know for transfer purposes specifically, but other reasons as well, how this impacts our students. I'm always, and I'm sure I'm not alone, and that's, and I'd like to know if there are other changes that are newly underlined and before that crossed out. If so, I think we need to know rather than depending on us to go through ourselves. And I don't mind doing that because I'll do it anyway. I'm sure the others do. But that said, how does this impact so many of the students who transfer in to our public schools, whether they're online or, or standing institution, building? And how, you know, if they come from a non-accredited or non-recognized. And how, you know, if they come from a non-accredited or non-recognized, well, a school that has non-accredited, is non-accredited, or has non-recognized accreditation, or some other problems that are certainly implied? I, I think that that's a problem that I hear maybe every six months, but specifically when they try to enroll children, and then they find out, too, that they have problems with credits transferring, perhaps even from other states.
But wow that you answered the question.
Yes, so you'll see this exact wording, Mr. Stevens and I went through, because we, Mr. Stevens and his role and myself, we deal with this a lot, and all this, this language takes, keeps the list, keeps us going to the list that's the most current list for the US DOE, and that's the wording from that, because they update, we, you know, from being in the, the schools and here with parents that call, while the, there may be a list from the, you know, accredit, the Cognia, what they have right now, Advanced Ed, they changed names, I'm sorry, but this is the most current, they keep the most current list, and so, like, if you, homeschools, wherever, across the globe, this is the most current, so we wanted to, as we were updating, like, another name, we updated Life PE to Beginning Canaceology. So all that you will see here, and that's an example, it came from the website on the US DOE, because that's where we had several parents that would call, just like you all may have, and they'll say, "Well, my child, we're trying to enroll, and my child, where came from this school and another wherever." So while they may not be on one list, this US DOE list is the most comprehensive, and it stays current, the most current, so that just really gives us the most current information, as well as the school districts. Because if they're not accredited, we know by what the code says, and then what local board policies have, you know, your electives automatically carry over, but then those core content areas, you know, whatever the local board says beyond this, but, so it really just extends the list to make sure that it's the most current. That's all that did. And it should be, I'm sorry.
Perhaps I didn't make it clear. How does this impact, and you mentioned schools, but specifically homeschoolers, because I'm not sure that that would be considered an accredited school. How does that impact our students, and also, can we have a list provided to us? But, but how does this impact students? That's really my focus, is how does this impact students?
Sure. Sure. We, so yes, we'll get you the, the link that we pulled this from, because the list is ongoing, but there's, you know, more than one way, yes, there are homeschools that they go through a different type of accreditation, and that's why the wording that we pull from the US DOE, it, because it pulls all of those from those different accreditating, accrediting bodies that meet those criteria. And so I'll be glad to, I'll send it to Ms. Nora.
It should, it should help solve that problem. We get those also, where people, they, they've gone to a school, you know, a homeschool in another state or something, and they're not accredited by one of these four that have been in the code, and then we were not able to accept their credits. So by going to this.
Yes.
It should solve that problem for 99% of those folks, because this makes it a wider, a much wider group of accrediting agencies that we will, we'll accept things from.
Does that go away, Reynolds? That this gets out to those who have homeschool umbrellas or co-ops and so forth? Because my question goes back to, how does this ultimately impact students? And in particular, since you mentioned it, I think it's relevant as well, because you will have students, particularly in the high school space, that will transfer in, and they may have been homeschooling. So anyways, that's a twofold question. Thank you.
Dr. Reynolds? Go ahead, Dr. Reynolds.
Yes, I would like to have the discussion on the change of the Administrative Code carried over, and for us to continue discussing it next month. I'm very much in favor of the temporary change, and that'll fix it like we need to, and then we can get the answers to all our questions and study the code changes, the law change, a little bit more in depth.
Board members, that way we could take it back with us, study it on our own for a month, and then come back and put it on the work session.
With the answers to the questions.
And with the answers to the questions. Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Sure.
And I guess as we go along, if you have questions, go ahead and send them, and then they could be answered when we return, oh, I mean, or whatever way you want to do it. So is that amenable to everybody? Yes.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
They do, yeah, we sent this, I think, we mailed it, we mailed a hard copy, and we, yes.
All right. Having looked through the agenda, is there anything that anybody needs to bring forth that I've forgotten, or are we just going to do the happy dance that we finished earlier than last month?
I don't want to belabor it, but let me just say, so April, I know some of the folks who are online have talked about coming in April. I know Dr. Chestnut had planned on being here today, she didn't feel well enough, didn't feel like coming. But, so we'll do a, we'll find out how many of you are coming in April. Obviously, that's the day before the current emergency order expires, so we'll still be under the mask and social distancing and things, so we may have to make some changes. But I do want you to know, I had a conversation earlier this week with the governor about future meetings in the summer, and if we were going to still do both virtual and in-person, and her feeling was that we would probably come back to in-person only in May, but she didn't make a commitment to that. Now, she, I'm so cautious, because, you know, things may change, the numbers may spike again, a lot of things could change. But just in your planning, if you think about that, that's, that's what, and she was thinking that we would, we would try to do only in-person in May, but she was also very open, if there were issues, board members didn't feel comfortable with that, and wanted to, she said for me to let her know. So please let me know if you don't feel comfortable with that. But in April, we would plan for things to be set up just like they are today, and I have had a request that we go back to hot meals with casseroles, and, and we will, when we get everybody back, we'll do that. It's just hard to do that, and the, the room and space and all that right now, but we will, when we get everybody back.
Dr. Mackey, Wayne Reynolds.
Yes, Dr. Reynolds.
I plan to be there in person next week and get to see everybody.
Okay.
Next month, in April. But I also want us to not lose context of being in person for our work session, or whatever we call our special meeting. We talked about it on the 19th, and Dr. Langham's going to communicate with the governor, and you're our elected superintendent, we would hope you communicate with the governor, but I'd like to see us to have a work session that, where we could all be there, and not where at least four or five of us can be there. That's very concerning to me. I brought it up before, and before we close, I want to bring it up again, communicate with Nick, Dr. Langham, but, Dr. Mackey, I kind of hold you as our superintendent, uh, out there to help us out with this issue.
We will make sure. I actually talked to Dr. Langham about that at lunch, and he's going to give it Mr. Moore on, on making sure the governor knows where everybody is. Yes, sir.
Well, I, I'm not in favor of us even having a meeting. We're the elected board, we can decide about the meeting. I'm not, I don't know what the governor's powers are, but you tell me, all right? You and Dr. Langham tell me.
Well, and Dr. Reynolds, you're correct, the Administrative Code, having been a part of the writing, that it specifically names the board, the board, this is the board retreat. It says specific, has a specific purpose, it has a specific date, where, but we've already missed that, and we can't help that, it's something having to do with COVID, obviously. I agree with you 100%, and I appreciate your comments. And yes, this is supposed to be controlled by the board, not the governor. The governor's specifically elected to be governor, this is the board's retreat, and there's a reason for that. Our former interim superintendent understood that, and actually reinforced it, and 100% supported us. This is not even supposed to be handled by the department, the department is supposed to be auxiliary to this, at our request. It is supposed to be for the board's purposes only. That's why it's called a board retreat. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just so we know, that the next board meeting will be April 8th, and so we are hoping we get to see more and more of you, because I want that hot meal. I just want everybody to know, I was one of those talking about hot meal, and I've already put in my request for it. Sesame chicken, or something, hoppy seed chicken, sorry. All right, it's been a pleasure being with all of y'all. If you do, if y'all take any items out of your notebook, please do not take the tabs, just take the paper. And everybody have a wonderful, wonderful day, it's a beautiful day in the neighborhood, as we used to sing that song, and we'll do it again in that, in April.